Starting, we were waiting for the dinging of the bell, I guess is what I call it. So, I will declare our meeting and ask you to come to order. This is our regular scheduled work session that we have on a monthly basis. And so, that's what we'll be doing tonight. I will ask our Assistant Town Clerk, if she will, to call the roll at this time.
Mayor Marshburn.
I'm present.
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer. Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Okay, and thank you, Councilmembers, for being here and being present tonight. And for those of you who are out there in the audience, we appreciate your coming. I know several of you have presentations to make or information to share with us. So, we look forward to hearing that. I guess we could recognize him a little later, and we recognized him before, Ms. Terry. But, I was gonna recognize our intern attorney again. He's sitting right up here on the front row. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, maybe at the break or something, you can say how to him as well. Good to see you, sir. Okay, Council, you have the agenda before you. What say you regarding adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded for the adoption of agenda. If you favor that, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. All right, thank you so much. I believe under Presentations, we will recognize Ms. Maria Blanco, our Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Director. So, welcome, and we'll be happy to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council. Good evening. I am delighted to bring our team this afternoon, or this evening, I should say, and introduce them to you. I'm gonna ask them to join me back here. Last year, last fiscal year, you approved the reorganization of our team, of our Senior Leadership Group. And, we have appointed now the four superintendents. Two of them you know. Katie Lockhart was promoted to Parks and Nature Superintendent. Katie has been with the town since 2014, doing amazing work at the White Deer Nature Center on the park. And she will be expanding her responsibilities to work with us in some of our capital projects. Megan Young, who you also know, she transitioned from her role as the Recreation Superintendent to being our Operations Superintendent. Megan has been with the town since 2017, and she's gonna be sort of shifting her role to handle our special events, our marketing, internal operations, and making sure that we continue to be an accredited agency by our national accreditation body. And then, we have two new staff members, and I wanted to introduce them to you. Amy Pridgen, she's our new Arts and Culture Superintendent. She's gonna be responsible primarily for managing the GPAC. Amy's first day was July the 25th. And I'm gonna let her tell you about, a bit about her background. And then, Todd Riddick is our new Recreation and Athletics Superintendent. He's been with us for less than a month, since August the 8th. And, again, both two amazing people, and we're really thrilled to have them in our team. So, if I can just pass the mic on to them to tell you briefly about them and what brought them to Garner.
Thank you very much, yes, please. Who's going first? Good to see you.
Hi there, I'm Amy Pridgen. I have a BFA in Musical Theater from the State University of New York at Freedonia, and an MFA in Performing Arts from Savannah College of Art and Design. I come from the world of academia. Before this, I was a full-time professor for eight years at William Peace University in downtown Raleigh, where I taught classes in acting. And, I also did a lot of producing, and partnerships, and technical writing there. And so, I'm really thrilled to be taking over as the Arts and Culture Superintendent. As Maria said, I'll be running the GPAC, but hopefully also cultivating the arts and culture seen here with our local businesses, and just kind of throughout the town of Garner. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if you can hear me, but my name's Todd Riddick. So, my background, I've been in the field for about 20 years. Graduated from East Carolina University back in many years ago, it seems like now. But, in Communications, and then a Master's Degree in Recreation Administration. Worked at ECU full-time for six years after that, as an Intramural Sports Director in Youth and Family Programs, and then moved on to Parks and Recreation in the City of Greenville, and then City of Raleigh, and now here in the great town of Garner. So, looking forward to it, and very excited to be here. And less than a month in, so you can still take it easy on me right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. Okay, does Katie wanna say anything?
I believe all of you know me, so I won't go into an extensive amount in terms of my background. But, I am very excited to jump into the world of marketing and events with a really amazing team, and work with my colleagues on department-wide projects and initiatives. A lot of really great changes, and just excited to work with our team. So, thank you.
Let me just say, before you leave, welcome to, to all of you. We're excited that you're part of, part of our town, and we look forward to getting to know you and seeing the work that you do. I would just say, on a personal note, that really Parks and Rec's what first got me interested in town government. I had a chance to serve on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, to use Mr. Riddick's term, many, many years ago. But, yeah, that's a, that's a great department, and I've admired the work that they do over the years. So, look, look forward to having a part of that. Councilmembers, if you care to say anything by way of welcome, I'd be happy for you to do that now. Phil, if you wanna start?
Yes, welcome aboard. We're definitely growing, got a lot of big things coming. And, like everything else in Garner, we're growing. Parks and Rec's a big part of that. And, as we've said many times, they don't make any more parkland. So, we're glad, we've got a lot we can work with now. So, I think you'll be challenged, and you'll have fun doing it. So, welcome aboard.
Second, what Mr. Matthews said, welcome, that you're here to be in part, part of the guy Garner team. And I look forward to working with you in the future.
Ms. Behringer.
I would echo what's already been said, but I have one question. Who's gonna be driving that van?
Our Recreation, Recreation and Athletics Team, our programming staff will be managing that, that program.
Love to see that riding around town. Welcome aboard.
Dellinger.
Yep, just welcome to Garner. Enjoy your, the ease, ease, the slow, ease in, 'cause I'm sure it'll pick up. We're growing by leaps and bounds, so you'll stay pretty busy. So, welcome aboard.
Vance.
And the same as everyone else, welcome to you all.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you around town, sure enough. I was gonna say, you could stick around for the meeting, but you are not required to do that, so it's okay.
Since, since we're here, I thought I would share a little bit of good news with you also, that you may have already heard. The Governor announced last night the awards for this fiscal year for the Public Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Seventeen million dollars spread around the state to 39 local organizations, and we're one of them. So, we'll be receiving a grant from the state for $400,000 to support the Jürgen Park Project. So, it'll take a few months before we get paperwork, and the official grant award letter and whatnot. But, I wanted to let you know that this is sort of good news for our wonderful park programs.
Well, that is wonderful news, and I had not heard that. So, he didn't give me a call to tell me about it, but at any rate, we are, we're happy that, yeah, we were able to get our portion, sure enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will move now from Presentations to Discussion and Reports. And I'll recognize our Assistant Town Manager, one of our Assistant Town Managers, Mr. John Hodges, who will lead us through discussion as it relates to the inter-local agreement and matters related to it. Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Presentation up briefly here for you. We do wanna update you tonight on the Caddy Road Public Safety Facility. With us tonight is Tommy Mormon. Tommy is a project manager and real estate specialist for Wake County Facilities Design and Maintenance, and been a partner of the towns in working on the design of this station. Also, Chief Poole and Chief Smith are also here, both of them involved in the design and the future use of this facility as well. So, just as a reminder to everyone, the image of, of the, or the rendering, rather, of our public safety facility that's going to be built, that's going to be shared with Wake EMS and Garner Fire, with touchdown space for police. This is its sighting on Caddy Road. I think everyone's familiar with this location. And then, a layout of the building, and I know you won't be able to see all the detail here, but just as a reminder, the lighter pink color is Garner Fire Space. The lighter blue color is Wake EMS. And then, the darker pink or red color here is space for Garner PD. So, for anyone who may not remember or may not know, we did work in some touchdown space, office space for Garner PD. Since this is on the edge of our jurisdiction, we wanted to work in some space for them to have a spot to work when they're out in that area. And that was worked into this plan. There is an expand, future expansion space highlighted in the back of the building. You may recall that this was going to, this was spaced when the study was done to determine if another fire service agency was going to cohabitate in the building. The decision was made by them to not move forward. So, we are preparing the pad for future development there. But, we are not proposing to move forward on any of the, the shell of that building at this time. Bids were open on August the 4th. The apparent low bidder is, bid, rather, was nine million, 693,000. This number does not include contingency and bid alternatives. And as a reminder, the town's cost share of this facility is 69%, and Wake County's is 31%. There were several bid alternates that were proposed and priced in the bid. Staff has recommended moving forward with three of those. Bay door upgrade, this would upgrade the doors, the bay doors for the apparatus for fire and EMS from the standard roll-up type doors to bifold doors. These cut down on potential damage in exiting and entering the facility, as well as maintenance cost. The, also, moving forward with photovoltaic or PV installation. This is solar technology that would generate power. This is part of Wake County Sustainability Initiatives. Just wanted to clarify that this power is not actually used to operate any of the functions of the building. That was a question that had come up previously, from some previous experience, I think, that Chief Poole and others had had with some solar systems. This is power generated that is, is sold back to the grid, and it just reduces the cost of operations for the building. But, it's not operating any key components of the building. And then, also, the addition of EV charging station, a dual charging station available to employees and visitors. And this was something from both the town of Garner and Wake County for their sustainability initiatives. So, with the construction cost, site costs, contingency, and those alternates, the, the price for the project is 10 million, 225, 10 million, 225, 330. There is a furniture fixtures and equipment or FFNE allowance. Automation and professional services totals 949,000. So, the total project cost is 11 million, 174, 330. Garner's portion is 69%, but if you do the math there, you're not gonna get 7 million, 712, 488. Because, within that 949, we do break out some of the furniture fixtures and equipment separately. So, that is actually a number of 174,700 that is being allocated. This does bring us to 1.2 million over our bond funds of 6.5 million. And we are suggesting that we round up allocating 1.5 million above our 6.5. With, with projects like this, even in, in normal times, often by the time you get out into the furniture fixtures and equipment stage of projects, the costs are very hard to predict for those things, really early in design development, and especially with, with the situations that we're facing today with supply chain and so forth. We believe that it's prudent to round that up and plan for 1.5 million dollars in funding that goes beyond the 6.5 we had in the bond. Tonight, before you, you do have an inter-local agreement with Wake County. That outlines a number of things, primarily that Wake County will lead construction. Town of Garner will make a payment, make payments to Wake County in two installments. This is a change from the draft that you have. In the draft, it does say one payment. We've gone back, working with our Finance Director and looking at the timing of the issuance of our bonds, and feel like it would be more appropriate to do one payment early in the process, about 60 days after execution of the agreement, and then another one six months later. And in working with Wake County staff, we believe that this will still allow them to, to cash flow the project. It's easier if they're able to pay the Garner portion out of our funds, and the Wake County, out of the Wake County funds, so that we're not doing reimbursements after the fact. So, we feel like this would be the best, the best way to work that out. And then, the town of Garner will retain ownership of the land. And so, Attachment A, that was the, another document is in your package, is actually outlining the terms of the lease of the land that the facility will be on. So, review the ILA, discuss construction contract and schedule. Our next steps then will be, this will appear on your September 6th agenda for approval of the ILA and authorization to Wake County to enter into the construction agreement on our behalf. September 19th, the Wake County Board of Commissioners will approve the ILA and execute the construction agreement. And then, on September, December 20th, the SUP approval, Special Use Permit Approval for the, the project will come to council as a part of your regular meeting then. And then, the project schedule, assuming that all those steps are followed, the construction contract date would be September 21st. The notice to proceed for submittals of plans would be October 1. The notice to proceed for construction would be November 1st. And then, substantial completion of the facility would be December 31st. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Tommy is here, if there's anything that he can answer on behalf of Wake County. And as I mentioned, both Chiefs are here, if there's any questions you have about space or programming.
Okay, thanks so much, John, for your presentation. And Tommy, we appreciate you being here, and we may wanna hear from you in a little bit. Just, just an observation, John, I, I was intrigued, or maybe I should say impressed, that, you know, with this project schedule, everything stays on schedule. We're talking about having a substantially built building out there in just a little over a year. Is that right?
Sure.
Okay.
And, and one of the things that makes that able to be accomplished and, and be successful is the Wake County team taking a lead on this. They've got a very skilled team. Tommy and all, all the folks with that team are very seasoned and skilled at delivering these type of projects in the county. So, it, it really helps us greatly to be able to have a, a partner like that who's going to deliver the project for us.
Council questions for John, I'll start with Mr. Singleton.
Yes, on the project schedule, it says substantial completion by December 31st or 23. What does substantial mean?
Well, Alice, Tommy, if he wants to give the technical answer, since he will be one of the ones determining, well, actually, our architects will be determining substantial completion, but I'll let him give you the technical answer for that.
Very good. Tommy Mormon, Wake County Facilities Design and Construction. Substantial completion is generally when we receive the certificate of occupancy. Doesn't necessarily mean we're ready to move in, but we have all authority to move in. The final completion and grand opening is probably gonna happen, I would guess, in January of '24, just to play it safe. But, we have built in some time to the schedule to accommodate lead times and other issues. So, we've already got some time built in, roughly 14 months. So, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to know, substantial meant, what you said, or substantial meant, we're 90% through, and we're waiting for some sheet rock to come in, or some exotic product that they have in supply side issues with? So, thank you, I appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go to my right, Ms. Behringer. Anything?
Two questions. As I was looking at, can you pop that print out again of the facility we had, all the, oh, you're right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wrote through there the other day, and this gonna be a great facility. Perfect location with all the growth that's going on. Not only commercial, it's residential, and already in that area, it's more residential. But, I think it's great, we got EMS, we got the fire. My concern is the small thing with our police department. I think we won't, as we grow out there, that one little spot there, I think the need's gonna be far greater than what we'll call a touchdown type thing. And, I would like us to look at that on the, on the front side, rather than put a Band-Aid on it and worry about it down the road. And of course, Chief Smith, she can address that, but just a little touchdown. I think we're gonna need a whole lot more with the growth going on out that way. And we know it's, if it ain't there by the time this thing is built, it's gonna need it. You know, it's gonna be more than just one or two Garner policemen out there, I'm thinking, once that whole area develops. So, that's a big concern of mine. While we're in this construction phase, I see we've got the dark pink, and there's nothing colored on either side of it. Is this something, is this something we can look at and play into the mix?
At, at this point in time, the, the, the design is done, so there's, there's no changing it now. The only thing that could be considered is this expansion space in the back that was considered, that, that could be built out. But, because of the budget increases for the project, we didn't see that there's any feasible way to be able to address that currently. We don't have a funding source for it. So, this space is not going to be built at this time, but the, the, the land is prepared for it. So, the pad is there, so that we could potentially come back in the future and add that. But, depending on what would be the need, whether it's additional fire staff or, or so forth.
What's going into two white areas here? You have one below it and one above it.
Comfort space, and, and mechanical and electrical.
John, if I may, the white areas, the unshaded areas are all shared spaces.
Shared spaces.
If it's not shaded, that's a shared space.
And Chief Smith may be able to speak to it, Councilmember Matthews. But, I think the thought on the, the police area was, you're typically not gonna have officers sitting there during their whole shift. They'll be out in the field. This is where they can just come in and do some paperwork, answer some calls. So, it wasn't intended to be like a all-day officer sitting there, but...
Well, I understand that, but if anybody thinks all the area's not gonna be so super grown out, with all these houses coming in, the commercial stuff, that this one little piece right here is gonna meet the needs of it, we're fooling ourselves. And, I hate to put a temporary, I, I know the plans, I understand all this stuff. But, however, you got a conference room there, I know it's shared, but here's a time to visit this thing and make sure we, we're doing it right. We've got everything else right, but the police presence, I'm really concerned. Maybe it's just me, but that growth is out there, and they're gonna need a place to operate out of, so...
Mr. Matthews, I, I don't disagree with you, but, but when we reviewed the design of the, the plan before we went out to bid, was definitely, you know, the time that we possibly could've discussed that. We did discuss the future expansion, expansion space that could be built in the future. No disagreement that there'd be, space is gonna be needed. But, currently, we have a centralized model that PD is using, so everyone is based out of one location. So, yes, there's a definite, probably future need for, for space in this area, but so would there be in other parts of town too. So, I think, no disagreement that we need to look at holistic needs in the future for PD. But, but it...
It's just a concern, 'cause, you know, 5:00 on Friday, we know a fire truck can't get out there, so I'm glad this is gonna be here. Police Department coming down 10:10, it ain't gonna happen. Because, if y'all have been out there, traffic's backed up forever. And, I think, we can talk about this more, but I, I just got a genuine concern. This is not gonna meet the needs for this beautiful facility we got here. We're gonna do it right, I agree with everything on it. But, I'm really concerned about the police presence out there, that we know that growth is coming. And 440 hasn't even come through there yet, so... Anyway, and the only other, other thing is, you mentioned on alternative power. It's gonna be a generator also, Chief Poole, at this location. Okay.
Yes, sir, the generator is located in just...
Okay. Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance. And thank Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, just a clarification. I thought, kind of in line with what Mr. Matthews has said, is the flex space gonna get shelled out? I thought that's what we had talked about, is shelling that, building the shell and the foundation, leaving it in open space. foundation, leaving it in open space and then going back in later.
We had looked at that early on, and then when the cost estimates came in through the design development process, we realized that it was going to be more costly to be able to shell that in, so.
It was going to, I think our rationale was it'd be cheaper to do it now than to do it in four, five, or six years, to include it in this. I thought that's what we talked about.
We did do a bid, we did do a bid alternate for doing that, and the bid numbers, Tommy, do you have the?
I don't really have that broken out. But the strategy is to consider what form of expansion we might be able to do once we get started on the project. There may be some form of expansion we could consider, but otherwise, the, the prices were already, the numbers were so much higher than we had anticipated, that not accepting that alternate made the most sense at this time.
The, the option exists as we go through it to make that adjustment.
In some form, in some fashion, to to get a head start on that, sure.
Yeah, I just think, like you were saying, it's going to cost that much more to do it in the future than it, it's not going to get cheaper to do it. I only got the question was, I guess, for Chief Poole on what your timeline is for equipping, upfitting, and it being in operation after completion.
Yeah, yes, sir. So we have hired the employees for the facility. They begin the Wake County Fire Academy on October the third, and it's almost a twelve-month process. So they'll go through the Wake County Fire Academy, and then they'll come back to our department and receive North Carolina Technical Rescue Training. So we're, we're looking at having our staff completed and trained in about twelve months, and then that will give us a month or two to do some internal SOP, SOG, in-basket type training. So we'll be prepared. We, we do not need any additional equipment for the station, so we already have, our fleet is prepared for that. The town and the county graciously specked out a quint ladder truck that is currently housed at of Station Three, that is designed to go to this facility. So regarding preparations for us, we should have everything we need at the time that the building is complete.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, counsel, do you have something, Mr. Vance?
Yes, just one minor thing, in reference to the slides you have available here, can you make those available on SharePoint?
Yes, sir, we'll load all the slides from tonight on the SharePoint drive for you, certainly.
Well, I'd just like to comment that, I mean, it's pretty, pretty exciting project as far as I'm concerned. Look, look, look forward to it. Is this, are there some other examples, well, I don't know if in the fire department or area in Wake County of of this type of a, interlocal agreement, or is this, are we paving new ground? No?
Yes, sir, there are some other examples in the county. If if we had moved forward with two fire agencies and one, that would have been paving some new ground, but we are, we do have some other examples that Tommy can can mention.
Okay.
We have several. What's unique about this ILA or interlocal agreement is that the county is actually a minority funding partner. Normally, we, we, we have a greater share in in the costs of the building, in this case, but that's one of the nuances of this particular ILA. But we have it in several places. The Cary Library is an example of that. The Morrisville Fire and EMS, we've done this in Morrisville as well.
Station Four?
I believe it is.
Station Four?
Yeah.
Morrisville, yeah.
So we have several examples throughout the county of using an ILA.
Okay, well, I'm glad we're going to be able to join in. There is one thing I think that's going to be new out there that, that hasn't been in the past, and that's the EV stations out there. I have some personal interest in those, since I have an adult son who has a, who has an all-electric vehicle, and he's teaching me some things about that, how you sort out where these places are. There are going to be more of them in the future, and any number of towns and counties are, are building those now moving forward. So that'll, that'll be something that's, that's new, new to me anyway, and new to all of us, I guess. Thank you, Tommy. Was there any final comments? I think you've laid it out pretty well. Some questions there, but I, I think it'll be a great facility, and there's certainly room to build out that shell and, I think, accommodate our future needs, so it's going to be a great project.
So we'll move this forward on your agenda for next week. There for approval, then Wake County can move forward with the rest of the processes outlined on the slides here. All right. Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, chiefs.
John, I believe you're still up on the next item, is that right?
Mayor, councilmembers, when we were before you back during the budget process, there was a request to give some updates on where we were with bond projects. Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources gave an update at last month's work session, so we want to take this month's work session as an opportunity just to bring you up to speed on some street and sidewalk bond projects. Some of this information is very similar to information that we had shared with you back in January, so some of it will look similar, but there have been some updates to some of the projects since that time. So we have a number of 2013 bond projects that we are wrapping up. You're all familiar with the Joan Sausage Road Design Project. We have the funding for that in the thirteen bonds. We are working on the White Oak Ackerman Hebron Church Roundabout Right-of-Way, and hopefully all of construction can come out of the thirteen bonds. Our right-of-way acquisition, as we'd mentioned to you previously, has taken a little longer and cost a little more than was originally inspected, so we're hopeful to be able to cover that all in the 2013 bonds. Lake Drive Design and Right-of-Way was completed in the 2013 bond funds. Lake Drive across from Fire Station One that is being widened by council's direction because of impacts for the fifty bridge will have on the neighborhoods around Dulles Circle and and that area. And then the Vandora Springs Ri- Road Sidewalk Project is being done now. That is a part of the 2013 bond project. Just as an update to that, Mr. Johnson is, is traveling for a conference tonight, so he's not with us. But as an update on that, we are continuing to experience some delays with, in, in several fronts on that project, but one of them most recently is actually materials. And so we've been working to redesign some of the project so that we can use a different classification of pipe that is more readily available than what was originally designed. So that has been somewhat successful, and some recent accomplishments have been made, but we are looking at probably a December timeframe on delivery or final, being final on that project. There's a tentative road closure that had been planned all along with the project. We knew there'd be a time that for, for water line installation under the road, that there would have to be a full closure. There's a tentative timeline for possibly doing that on Friday, the ninth, through Sunday night of that weekend, but we are not going to publicize that to the general public until we have reached the milestones with the contractor to know that the dates that we publish are going to stay there. But Mr. Mercer and the communications team are working with engineering so that we can get the word out when we know that's going to, to take place. Other projects that were started within the thirteen bonds that, that we're considering carrying over is the Main Street Streetscape and Downtown Parking. As you're all aware, we did get the federal funding for that project of of a million dollars. That combined with some of the money that was in the 2013 bonds, we're hoping to accomplish most of that project, but we have identified that that may cost us more than we have between those two sources, so that may roll into some of the 2021 projects. The Lake Drive Construction has been LET awarded, and that, that construction will come out of the, is moving over to the 2021 funding. We have three sidewalk connectors that council's familiar with that you instructed us to work on. The Garner Road Sidewalk Connector from Vandora, Vandora West down to Purdue Street, well, I'm sorry, past Purdue Street is a missing gap. Avisboro Road Sidewalks from the YMCA to Zenia Court, and then Bryan Road Sidewalks past the middle school site that would connect to Ackerman Road. You may recall, when we did that school project, we allowed the school to stop short of that because it was a pretty, pretty challenging crossing of, of a water feature there. Where all of those are in design now, as is Pearl and Parker Street Improvements. You may recall that with the development of the, the Depot Museum Facility, and now across the street, we're going to have a townhome project there. We're trying to coordinate the completion of our half of the street requirement, the street improvement requirements as close to the same timing as the development as we can.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Uh-huh.
Approximately, how much are each of these going to cost from 2021 bond funds?
The sidewalk connectors and the Parker Street, I don't have numbers for because we're just starting design on those, so I don't have any, any numbers on those right now. The Lake Drive Project, we've awarded that, and I'll see if I can find a number for you, Mr. Dallenger, but I don't have it right.
I think it'd be helpful to follow up after the meeting with a list of this in, in dollar figures, so we can kind of mentally start to track.
And.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, we will. One of the things we've mentioned to you previously is, one of the things that happened to us early in the 2013 bonds is, if we put out a number that was based on an, an early estimate, then that's the number that got locked in forever, and if it ever had to change, there was a lot of challenge, both, you know, at staff level and council level and the public level. So what we're trying to do is not publish a number until we either have a very far-along design number, but in the case of Lake Drive, it has been LET, I just, I don't have the number in front of me. So some of those that we do have a pretty firm number on, we can get back with you on the numbers.
Yeah, I think estimates would be helpful, too, so we can kind of gauge how far these bond dollars are potentially going to go, even understanding they're not set numbers, but we need to have a kind of.
And, and one, one thing, we, we will, yes, we will get those, we will ask your understanding, though, and we'll do everything we can to label them such that you know that they're only at a certain design level. I just, I'm hesitant to, to repeat some of the same challenges we fell into with the thirteen bonds, because not only for staff, but those are tough questions for council to answer, you know, when, when people get married to those numbers out in the public as well. So we just want to be conscious of that for, for your benefit as well. Other projects that have been on the radar that, that we are needing to fund, the Highway Seventy Lighting Project, this was a council priority, and that we do know a number here, this is about a $500,000 project, is ready basically to go whenever we want to move forward. Probably need to assess it in, in order of magnitude with other funding, but that is one that Duke has done the design, and they just need to refresh the price estimates to make sure they're still current. This would light Highway Seventy from the Fifty Bridge back to the White Oak Shopping Center where the lighting ends there. We committed to a sidewalk match through NC DOT for the 401 Super Street Project, and so that is on our books as something that when that project moves forward, we will be responsible for our portion of those sidewalks. Similarly, with the Highway Fifty Bridge Project, we have some enhancements that council approved us adding to that bridge, included some decorative elements and some decorative lighting. That project is beginning to move forward and has a, a date for this fall, so we will be expending the dollars in about the $400,000 range for that. The Rayner Road Bridge Project, there was half of, the match is still be, remaining to be paid. That was a bridge replacement that DOT was planning to do, and we asked for the bridge to be raised slightly so that a future White Oak Greenway that is on our greenway plan could be accommodated under it. And then the Timber Seventy Hammond Intersection, we've had that on our list because council had directed us to add, worked through the DOT program to add sidewalks beyond what would be added in that project. I will say that that has gone out past what DOT calls past horizon year, so it is pushed out beyond the actual time that we probably need to budget for it at this point, because DOT is not budgeting for it. Mr. Vance can correct me if I said, if there's a better way to say that, but.
It, it's unfunded.
Yes, sir. So, but I did want to just keep it on the list, because whenever it does come back around, there's some very key sidewalk connectors that are not part of the project that council and staff believes are very critical to have. And then projects that we had planned to have in the 2021, street and sidewalk projects, Joan Sausage Road Construction, of course, our sidewalk projects, we are currently working on the pedestrian master plan. It is underway now. There is a second steering committee meeting tomorrow for anyone who is participating in that. And when that comes back in about the February timeframe, we'll be working with council to look at that plan and then other sidewalk priorities that you want to move forward with. And then one thing that's been more recently mentioned by council that we are going to be bringing back to you is traffic calming for Poole Road and Main Street. These are two streets in town that council had identified that they wanted to do some traffic, traffic calming that sort of fell outside the normal, the normal policy that we have for that, and council wanted to look at staffing's recommendation for placement of those, and we're going to be bringing you back some location placements for those and then talking to you about next steps to move those forward.
Pool Drive.
Pool Drive, I'm sorry.
All right. There's many roads, what's written on there, but it's.
Yeah. So let me pause there. Those are the list of projects that we are tracking, and to Mr. Dallenger's point, we'll start working on a format that we can assign some numbers to these, but really just wanted to refresh everyone on the, on the list of projects that we are tracking, make sure that there, if there's any questions about those, we can address those tonight or later, and then also make sure there's nothing that had been on your priority list that we don't have captured on these lists.
Let this pause down, and we'll see.
Yes, sir.
I'll start with Mr. Vance down here, if he has anything.
Yes, I have a question in reference to the, the Roundabout.
Yes, sir.
If I heard you correctly, it's currently, the, the right-of-way is currently holding.
We are, Ms. Jones may be able to answer that better. We are, made substantial progress with the right-of-way, but it is what's been taking some time on that.
So we're dealing with about twenty different property owner groups, and we filed eminent domain lawsuits for about six cases, but really two different property owner groups. We have settlements with the remainder of the property owners, except for one where there was a private street that was platted, and we're still trying to track down heirs of who owns that little bit of that private street that we have to deal with. So we hope, we had hoped to have everything locked in by tomorrow, but it's probably going to be, you know, another thirty days before we actually have all of the deeds and have the right to proceed with that. But we're, we're moving forward. It's been some complicated title situations on some of those properties.
Can you elaborate on, but not long, but on, when you say proceed, does it mean that certification of right-of-way, or you have, you complete right-of-way, you still have another process to go through?
No, what I mean by that is, we've either filed the lawsuit, and these road improvements are under quick take, so the title vests in us as soon as we file the lawsuit, or once we actually go to closing on the settlements and we get a deed in hand from those property owners. At that point, then, we would have all the legal right to proceed with construction.
And, and question back to Mr., Mr. Hodges. Now, if, when is the proposed let date for the project, construction to begin?
I do not have a let date at this point in time. I know Mr. Johnson is working through some utility relocations in addition to the right-of-way. That's been another time-consuming challenge, so I don't know that he has assigned a potential let date. I don't have his, sorry, I don't have his capital projects report in front of me. He may have had a date assigned, but I think it's probably still one that is moving based on these other things.
If I understand that, when, when you have issues with right-of-way, also utilities, it's a moving target for the let date. Got you.
And the, this is also a LAP funded project, so there is a step of going through right-of-way certification, and I don't know if we've done some of the certification on all of, or part of the right-of-way that's already been acquired or not, but that is a step. You mentioned that process, and that is a process that we will have to go through because of the funding source that we're using for the project. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dallenger, anything?
Yeah, just, I think it'd be helpful to get us a, kind of a tracking form for the bond monies, just sort of, as it's allocated, estimates, because I, I, looking at this, it's hard to know how much of this is carryover from previous work, and how much is earmarked for future work. And I think a lot of people expect 2021 bonds to go towards future work, so it'd be helpful to get some of those numbers to see there's money to contribute to future projects.
Yes, sir. That, that process is one of the, one of several very strategic projects that our special project manager was going to, is working on, and, and we've had to use her resources for a few other things like budget, but that is high on her priority. And what we're trying to do is work out a process that not only provides you that running total, but it's also a tool internally that can be used by all the many other staff people that have to interface with it. We did something similar with the 2013 bonds, and we, what we learned is that we, we had something that whoever had that was updating it, but it wasn't universally able to be fed by other participants, and we weren't showing the whole picture at all times because of changes in contracts and so forth. So, point well taken, we are working on that now, and we're going to roll something out to you as soon as we can do that.
Behringer, anything?
Just one question. What is the projected finish date of the Joan Sausage Road construction?
I'm going to cover that in the next part, if you don't mind me just deferring that one, because that's the next part of this presentation, and I'll, I'll jump over to that then if that's okay.
I appreciate the information. I know we, we, there are projects that have been brought forward from 2013, you know, there's money set aside, that the lighting on Highway Seventy was money was set aside and brought forward, so along with those three sidewalk projects, and people, you know, we don't realize this happened in, from 2013, too. Things popped up. Pearl and Parker Street were not on the radar in 2013. Nobody knew about it, and all of a sudden, having us in, then we had the projects. That popped up. Lake Drive wasn't on, on the scene until we did the meeting regards to the Highway Fifty Bridge and realized it was, and cut off the exit to the exit ramp, and those folks are locked in on that little narrow road, and so that popped up, and so, who knows, something else might pop up with the Highway 401 sidewalks, when DOT has changed kind of how they're going to do that project, because it's going this far, then it's going to go to positive mechanical, or however it might go, and we talked about sidewalks and lighting because of the issues with pedestrians, it's so dark over there than the sidewalks also, so those things have popped up, so. And it happens in a growing region. If we weren't growing, some of these things wouldn't pop up, but a lot of them are related to transportation issues, new bridge over Fifty, the, the pedestrian deaths on 401, the small ones that we've had with the sidewalks, it's just, stuff happens. And, you know, hey, if we have plenty of money, then you can address all of it, but guess what, you don't have plenty of money, you can't, and you can't do business that way. So, you kind of have to prioritize them and try to move forward, but I appreciate Mr. Delinger asking for the running schedule. We did, y'all did a good job of that last time, and I'm sure you'll continue to do that, but, yeah, the, the big thing is being careful with, with the figures, because as we can see right here, the Jones Sausage figures sure look a whole lot different than they did when we talked about the bonds last year, so I'll be quiet.
Matthew.
Thing has been covered, sir.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay.
All right.
Proceed, John.
So speaking of Jones Sausage Road, as Mr. Johnson and our consultant brought back to you, I think in the July timeframe, an update, once we got to the thirty percent, I'm sorry, June timeframe before our public meeting, the thirty percent design estimate put that project being at about $3 million for right of way and utility relocation, construction at about 9.5 million, for a total of about 12.5 million. Previously, we had talked to council, you know, many months back, if not years back, about the potential for applying for LAP, a locally administered project, priority projects, projects program through Campo for funding this, similar to what we're doing with the White Oak Roundabout. We did that with timber drive sidewalks, and we've done it with a number of other things in town. At the time, because the price tag for the project seemed more approachable, the decision was made, or the guidance was given, to not pursue LAP funding. We think now with the increase in the pricing and the way that the schedules for the project and the LAP funding may line up, that we wanted to propose to you that we revisit submitting an, an application for LAP funding. So to Ms. Berengers' earlier question, this is the schedule that you were presented in June, with the sixty-five percent design plans later this fall, and you see all the steps involved there that get you to a construction beginning in fall of '24 and completion in fall of '26. So, we're about two years out from construction and two years to complete the project once it's started. So that's the timeframe for the project as it stands right now, assuming that no other, no other issues come up. The LAP funding schedule, there is a, a funding opportunity, a call for projects open now. These would be applications that we would submit for what is considered the 2024 funding, so fiscal year 2024 in federal year terms. We can submit an application this October. In January of next year, we would know what projects are going to be recommended to be approved by the Campo Board. They would give that final approval in March, and then funding would be available at the beginning of fiscal year '24, which is September of '23, and then we have to obligate that by April of '24, meaning we have to bid the project and award it to obligate the funds. So we think it's worthwhile for us to do this application to see if we can get funding with the LAP program for construction. This would be for construction only. We could ask for potentially up to eighty percent. We sometimes choose to ask for a little less than that, just based on what we think our odds are for the project, but one thing I'll point out to you here is April 24th is the deadline for obligation, but we're, we've got a really tight timeframe here to make all that work and be able to award the project around the same time. So there's not a lot of wiggle room in the schedule, but one other benefit about making an application now is that even if we apply, which we have enough information to apply, one of the benefits of this is that we get a pretty good assessment back from the Campo review team for how the project scored. So sometimes we submit these and they don't even, they don't even score for funding the first year to be awarded, but we get valuable feedback about the project for a future submission. So while we don't want to wait for, for FY25 funding cycle, we could still make use of some of the money. We might would have to delay starting the project a little bit for FY25 money, but it would give us a good idea of how the LAP program might look at scoring this for a future year's funding. It is a tight window, it could add a little bit of time to the overall schedule. We could go out, as I said, for the 2025 funding, but it would give us that feedback. So, we are, staff is, is thinking this is worthwhile for us to do. We've done these several times before, even when we weren't awarded those, so staff's ready and available to do this. Ms. Lontos Lawler, as well as Mr. Trezenberger, both on tonight, and I'll, I'll pause in a moment, just see if either one of them want to add anything about the process, but that's one thing we wanted to mention to you tonight, that with the, the cost of the project, we feel like it's worthwhile to look into this as a potential funding source. So Gabby, Jeff, is there anything about the LAP process that, that I failed to mention or that you need to correct me on?
No, I think you covered that perfectly, and, you know, you, you already mentioned that even if we were to not receive funding, that would be a good opportunity to get feedback to come back with a stronger application in the following year, so I, I think you, you pretty much covered everything, everything else, so unless council has any questions, or Jeff, if there's anything that you want to add to that.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Obviously, I sit on the Campo, call you Campo Board. When, when would, would we know if this is going to be approved by Campo? Maybe you already told us that, yeah, okay, March of '23, is that right?
So we would, we would have a really good idea in January of '23, because if we're not on the list that's going to be submitted to the Campo Board, there's no chance that it's going to get approved. There is sometimes a slim chance that things recommended by staff, or at the Campo staff level, may not get final approval by Campo Board members, but it's not going to happen the other way. So we would know in March, in around the January timeframe, whether our project was even on the list that's getting submitted to the Campo Executive Board for consideration.
Not that far away.
So, so we can submit the project, and we're, we're not going to slow down on any of the work we're doing to submit it and then get an answer back. The only risk we have is that if we get awarded the project and then our timeline has slipped any, there is the chance that we would have to turn down the funding when the actual award happens, and that does happen. We would prefer not to get that far and have to turn it down, but it is, it is something that we can do, and then we can still reapply in '25, or for the FY25 dollars.
Okay. Other questions for, for Mr. Hodges on this? Anything?
I have one. So the, the timeline for completion is two and a half years out, or three. This portion of Jones Sausage Road from Garner Road to the edge of where the Amazon property stopped is in terrible shape. What happens between now and then? Is there going to be any repairs made to that portion? It's just, just in really bad shape.
Nothing that we're aware of. It would probably be whatever is in, in DOT's regular maintenance schedule. We have worked with DOT at the request of some of the citizens that live along there, not about condition of the road, but they had some questions about signage, striping, and speeding, and so we have worked with DOT, and they have added a restriping of all of those, the lines that delineate the, the lanes and the turn and movements and so forth. They have agreed to come out and do that, and also scan for any signs that are missing or need additional signage, so we did get a commitment from DOT to make those improvements that were requested by the residents.
pavement itself is in need of attention as well.
Gray, anything?
Yes, the section Ms. Berengers was talking about, just really one section of it, is where the school property ends to where the Amazon property ends, is a narrow, narrow section that I know they, that I think Public Works and DOT have gone and patched pot holes, they're patching them instead of repairing them, and if it's going to take till the fall of '26 to get it done, the patching ain't going to work, ain't going to be no road left, because there's so many heavy vehicles on there, the dump trucks and the, the big trucks from, from Amazon, from all the businesses in that area. So, you did say that if we go through the LAP schedule, that this, that this, nothing here will change. That's, that will, that will basically try to stay on schedule.
We will try to stay on that schedule. The, the, the challenge is if anything slips here, just through the natural progression of, of delays, the right of way we experienced with, with the other project and so forth, if anything pushed this out, it would push this schedule out, but it could also push us past a window of accepting the LAP funding in that cycle, which we could go back another year for it, but then that's the, that's the six month to a year gap, you know, that we've got to look at.
That's my next question, is the right of way, because the issues you're having here, let's assume we're going to have issues here. You're dealing with twenty property owners there, you're going to be dealing with that many or more here, I'm assuming, and I don't know exactly, but I mean, we're talking spring '23 through winter '24, nine to twelve months, and that may be, I mean, how long have we been working on the roundabout? Twelve months, fifteen months? I don't know. Sometime. I'm, I'm just thinking to me, that's like a big hiccup. Hiccup, speed bump, traffic common device, whatever you want to call it.
Yep. It, it could be, and one, this, this often out of our control.
Yeah, I know, and I'm just saying that, that, I mean, it's hard to believe that if we go through all these hoops and everything, we're still, you're four years out from that road being completed. That's just, you know, I know it's, it's tough for many of the people out there, and I know some of those folks, when we get to right of way and land acquisition, you know, some of the houses are right there on the road, and I mean, whether, whether, where it's going to be done, so that process cannot start any sooner than next spring, because you won't have the plans far enough along.
Right. It can't start before seventy-five percent design plans, and rarely these days do those get finished early, so it, we have to get to that point before it's really safe to start doing right of way to know exactly what's needed.
That's just the only big hiccup I see, and it's, again, it's out of our control, some of it is, because people have the right to challenge it, take you to court, and so forth and so on, that's, we all understand that, it takes time. If someone, Ms. Jones, in the cases where, what you've been talking about now, the condemnation, using that as the tool that you have to use, how long is that process before the town or the government who, who does, goes through the condemnation process? How long does that process take?
To conclude the case, we still have some from the first part of Jones Sausage Road still open, but for us to actually have the legal right to do the work and, and basically for the property to vest in the town, we had a minimum have to do a thirty day notice letter and then file the lawsuit. However, to get to the notice letter, there has to be title searching, and what I've learned from White Oak is it's not something I can do on my own, it's, but now I have in place attorney, you know, three different law firms that are capable of doing the work that we can do, and, and I have learned that we need to get the title work, as soon as we know which properties are really impacted, to get the title work. With White Oak, we started at the sixty-five percent plans, and I sent out letters to the owners at that point, and we ended up, through the design, about five of those parcels were no longer impacted. So if we, if we go out too early and start acquiring things we don't need, on the flip side, other ones, you know, changed between the sixty-five and seventy-five, so it's, it's very hard to finalize those settlements until you have a good set of plans and know exactly how each property is being impacted, and it's not just the widening, a lot of it is the drainage and the utility easements that have to be done, and, and what with the town engineer and I have also learned is that the utility relocation takes a lot of time, especially if, you know, you're having to put those utilities into a new easement area.
Well, I know the condemnation process is the last step you want to take, but sometimes it is, that's the last resource you have to use to try, so, thanks. I, I just, I, I'm, you know, I know with the money and the, getting the LAP funding, it's just a lot of money, and it sure will be great assistance, so, it's just, I look at the fall of '26 and sitting here thinking that ain't going to ever happen because of some of these hiccups I think that are going to come along. Thanks.
Okay. Anything, Phil?
I had some question. You hate to lose this money, and I know it, we're sort of rolling the dice a little bit, but you hate to leave it on the table at the same time, because there's a lot of what ifs, so, where do you, you, you just about want to go for it, and you got to.
Yeah, and at this point, we don't really see it slowing us down from anything that we're currently doing, just to submit the application and get the feedback and see, see what we get from that.
But he makes it into the mix.
Right.
Okay.
Certainly hear of other LAP projects approved, I'd be happy to see if this one would, would happen, sure enough. Anything down this way, Mr. Delinger?
What was the share again for us under LAP approximately?
The maximum would be eighty them, twenty us. That's the maximum benefit. We applied seventy-five, twenty-five for White Oak because we felt it was a fairly competitive year. There's a pre, there's a required pre-application conference that you have to have, and you can sometimes gauge who else is going to submit based on that, so we make, we base our decision about the percentages or our recommendation to you about those, sometimes based on what we see, but the very, the very most we could get would be eighty percent.
Yeah, the only other, just kind of comment, general comment is in the little, our full street and sidewalk bond was twenty-four, and I remember the estimate for this was two or three, and so it gives me concern for what our transportation funding looks like for any other projects around the town, to be able to put up any money, to accelerate any, I know that's one of the things we talked about during the bond, so the price tag on this is basically eating up most, if not all, potentially at the end of the day, the budget for this street portion of that bond, so we're going to have to start thinking about ways to raise revenue for infrastructure and transportation. If this, the dollars aren't going quite as far as we thought they would, so I think that's kind of something that staff, we need to start talking about, is where are we going to find other money for transportation projects, even if we're not the sole entity, we at least have funds available to be a partner, to get some projects done, or started, or, or something, just...
And right now, the LAP program is the best option we have, because there's really no other option through DOT, except for very, you know, for economic development anomalies like Amazon that I'm not sure we'll ever see repeated again, so that's the, the best solution that we have to go for, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring this forward tonight, is we just don't feel like we can afford to not take a look at what this funding could do for our overall bond project, and, and like you said, for other transportation projects.
So certainly the smart thing to do as far as I'm concerned. Mr. Vance, did you have a question?
Yes, I surely do. In reference to the LAP funding and making the application, is the, is that eighty percent include right of way and construction?
You apply for funding for either or combination of, of design, right of way, or construction, and in this case, we would just be applying for construction, because we will, we've already done right of way, we believe, I'm sorry, done, design, and we believe that trying to add right of way and construction together, you have to commit your dollars and spend them within a period of time, and we don't believe it's feasible in this sized project to do right of way acquisition and construction within the time window that you're allowed to expend the dollars. So we would recommend only applying for construction in this particular case. For White Oak Roundabout, we actually applied for right of way and construction, and while that did take a little longer, we were able to use a, an extension that they had available to extend some time on that, but I, I don't want to plan on there ever being another window of opportunity to extend it like that, like we had before. So we would recommend just doing construction. There may be days down the road that we come to you and say we'd like to apply for LAP, but we recommend applying for LAP for design only, or design and right of way, and not construction, but you pick one of the three or combinations of those that can be completed within the, the timeframe.
Okay, all right. I agree with this. It's definitely worth a shot, with eighty percent being paid by DOT of nine million, nine million dollars, that's seven million dollars plus they'll be paying, if we're able to get approval for that. That's a, that's a tremendous, that's worth, I would say, the effort to even apply for it. Going back to Mr. Singleton's question in reference to the delays, if we look at even with a behemoth like, like, like Amazon, they had issues with their section because of an unforeseen utility that was, that caused a delay, which caused them to have some serious problems with them trying to get occupancy, because they could not move forward the project. Those things pop up along the line, we just don't see it coming, and I understand, we do have a tight schedule here, but I will say keep pushing hard, because that's where I am. So I got it.
Thanks, sure, yeah.
And you do see us, if, you, we probably call this out sometimes, but we are asking for funding as we do design projects now for more of the exploratory work for, for utilities than we had done in the past, and so because of those lessons learned, we know that that work that is done to try to find as much of that in the, in the beginning is helpful, but it's, it doesn't find everything. They still do pop up. So next step for us, on the 2021 bonds, as we already mentioned earlier, developing the processes, systems to manage the projects, so that you have better tools for, for prioritization and monitoring the funding. We are still working to fill our engineering project manager positions. That has proven to be very challenging for us to find candidates for those positions, but they're going to be very critical for us to be able to move these projects forward. We will finalize the pedestrian plan to inform the sidewalk project prioritization, and then pending the outcome of tonight's discussion, we would recommend submitting for the LAP application for Jones Sausage. So that is our summary of our next steps, and we'll be glad to, if there's any additional things that you have on your, your mind, we'll add that to our list to do as well.
I believe we've already agreed on the last one, have we not? No. Okay. Any final observations or questions on this subject before we move on? Council?
I check in quickly with staff, just to make sure there's nothing else. Gabby or Jeff, is there anything to the end of that conver- of that conversation that we need to add?
No, I think you covered it all, John.
Okay. Thank you both for being with us.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sure enough.
And John, just one last thing, Mr. Mayor. The LAP funding, is that not competitive?
It is competitive. Uh, yes, sir. It is. And so the, the pre-application helps us sort of figure out, as I mentioned before, what the competitive nature, uh, may look like. Um, I'll add one other quick update that was not a part of that presentation, but the mayor mentioned EV, and we, we talked about EV chargers earlier. Did just want to let you know that since the last update we gave you, we have, um, had a site visit with the consultants working on behalf of Duke's Plug and Play program. Um, and we have identified a site on the campus for the two chargers, uh, two stations, which would be four chargers, to be located. Uh, we're tentatively planning that to be, um, spaces that are, just as you walk across towards the police station from here, on your right, there's six parking spaces, uh, behind the library there, five are needed for this, because we have to have a handicap access, or an accessible van space, and so taking those six spaces to put those in, we think fits well. Um, me not knowing, ask about visibility for folks, and I was quickly told by all the folks on the call that have an electric vehicle, that the app you use to pay for that with is going to direct you to where those are. You don't really need to worry about them being visible from the street. Um, and so everyone involved in that project feels like that's a great location, um, to put them. Will, the next step that you will see with that will be an agreement with Duke Energy, uh, that we'll be bringing back to you when it's ready. That will be a five-year agreement for them to install and operate those, and then at the end of five years, we'll have an option whether or not we, um, if Duke has an option to continue doing that, or whether we would take them on and own those. We did learn from that meeting that there may be some communities that were awarded those early on that may not be taking those now. So we put our name back in the hat for our second location, which was the recreation center site, um, and we're waiting to hear back whether or not there's going to be some surplus of those that we might, could go ahead, um, and make a, a, a request for them to consider installing four of those over at the recreation center site. So we'll keep you posted on that status.
Just a quick word on the visibility issue. Again, I've learned through my son's experience, uh, they don't have to be so visible. These people know how to, how to, how to find them and get to them for sure. Uh, thank you, John.
And, and John, you said Duke calls us plug and play?
Park, park and plug, and I say plug and play. I'm thinking, yeah.
Plug and play, and I was saying, that's what we do for playgrounds.
Park and plug, sorry. I was, the, the, the wreck and rolls van was here earlier. I guess I just got that tied up. Yes.
Thank you, John. Okay. Um, let's see. Ms. Jones, I believe, uh, we'll hear from you next. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Um, purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you an overview of the option of utilizing development agreements for, um, large projects. I know of, um, two separate projects that may be interested in pursuing a development agreement with the town of Garner. Uh, we won't talk about the specific details of those projects tonight, uh, but this is basically to give you an overview of this option and what are the requirements, as well as the constraints, uh, with going forward with this. So development agreements have been authorized since two thousand and six. Uh, they're now codified in chapter, um, one sixty-D. There are other options, um, to get, say, road improvements or other public infrastructure built that are authorized by state law, the public enterprise improvement contract, a road and intersection improvement contract, reimbursement agreement, or development agreement. Um, each of them are a little bit different authority and have different pros and cons associated with going forward with those. Um, public enterprise improvements, um, these are generally for your large scale, although you can use them for public transportation such as roads, but water and sewer, um, solid waste collection, off-street parking, like a, a parking deck, um, and stormwater management. Um, the limitation, one of the limitations in the law is that improvements must be adjacent or ancillary to private development, and there are no definitions in state law as to what exactly adjacent or ancillary means. Typically, adjacent, you would think it abuts the property. Um, ancillary, uh, we don't know, uh, what that definition is, but there is, in this particular law, it explicitly states that the developer may assist the town in acquiring easements from other private properties that may be needed. Uh, so that tends to, um, suggest that ancillary means not just abutting, not just property that's, um, controlled by a particular developer. Intersection and road improvements, um, these are for public intersection and roadway improvements. This is not often used, and, um, again, it has the same language, improvements must be adjacent or ancillary to the private development. Uh, one of the reasons I think it's not utilized that often is it is subject to public contracting laws. So the private developer, um, if they're gonna go ahead and, and build this infrastructure, they would have to go through the public bidding, just like the town would be, um, or go through some certain findings. And, and so I think this is why, although the authority is there, you don't often see many municipalities, um, using this as a way of getting, uh, roadway improvements, uh, constructed. Reimbursement agreements, um, another option, and again, that's for the design and construction of municipal infrastructure. Now, in this particular law, it specifies that it can only be used for these types of improvements, water and sewer lines, pump stations, streets, stormwater, curb and gutter, sidewalks, and traffic control devices. Um, it has to be, the project has to be already included in the town's capital improvement program, and it has to serve that particular development. Uh, again, the developer must solicit bids under the public contracting law, and in order to utilize this option, uh, the town needs, um, an ordinance that identifies the terms and procedures for entering into reimbursement agreements. At this time, the town of Garner has not adopted, um, that type of ordinance. Again, um, many developers don't want to be necessarily constrained, uh, by the public bidding laws. Uh, so it's not as an attractive option, uh, to some of them. You see reimbursement agreements typically, um, for things that are adjacent, um, to a particular development. Big question why we're here is, is because of the property rights that are guaranteed by the federal and state, um, constitutions. You may not be deprived of your property without just compensation. The way we do this is through, um, our authority under eminent domain. And we do this, uh, to avoid takings claims. So just as a little refresher for you, a physical taking is where the government seizes private property for a public purpose. So a right-of-way expansion or installing sidewalks on property, that would be what's called a physical taking. It's a, actually a seizure of that property to be used for a public purpose. A regulatory taking, on the other hand, is where the government restricts the use of property, and this typically happens when, that you require a set aside for open space, or a setback, or a buffer area. Um, again, it, in some respects, that both of these takings have to be compensated. Exactions are very similar to, um, takings, but they are mandatory dedications of land, the required construction of facilities, or the payment of funds needed to address the adverse development impacts that are imposed as a condition of development approval. And the Supreme Court test, uh, for this is that it must be rationally related to the impacts or needs generated by the development, and roughly proportional to what is needed to address those impacts. So typically, in the town of Garner's, um, site plan and subdivision requirements, uh, developers are required to build the new streets in the, in the subdivi, in the subdivision. They build those new streets. They eventually get turned over to the town once they're, um, complete. They also are required, if they're, um, if they have frontage on any public streets, they're required to dedicate and, and build up to the, um, half of the, um, the cro, the required cross-section of however that street is, is classified. So that's, within their property, they're responsible for that, and there's generally, um, not a lot of question about that. Uh, what happens is a lot of these developments impact other roads and intersections that don't abut their property. And that's, um, when we get into a traffic impact study, you look at the impacts, how many trips are generated by a particular new development, where is that traffic going, and what improvements would be, uh, necessary if those particular roadways or intersections are, are below the capacity to handle the new growth associated with that. Um, so that's when, it has to be rationally related. Uh, a development in, in one corner of the town can't be required to upgrade the roads completely across on the other side. There has to be some, um, geographic type nexus. There has to be, uh, something showing in the traffic study to show that the traffic will be going through that particular roadway or that intersection. And again, roughly proportional means if this particular, uh, subdivision or site plan is contributing ten percent of the, of the new traffic in that area, then they're only really responsible for ten percent of the cost of addressing those impacts. So again, um, the subdivision regulations in state law do, um, say that the town can require the dedication of right-of-way and easements for street or utility purposes, or may require a fee in lieu of road construction. But if there is a fee in lieu, it must be based on the trips generated from the development, and, and that's been the accepted formula for determining what is the rough proportionality of the impacts. And again, also, um, not just for road, uh, improvements, but in subdivision, you may require the dedication or fee in lieu for recreation and open space, and the town does do this. So, um, development agreements, um, we'll go over the purposes, how you would adopt one, what are the mandatory requirements, and what are the limitations? So, uh, this was an alternative, um, because it, it was thought that the general, um, rezoning and site plan and subdivision process did not always, um, address what happens when you have a lot of public and private resources, uh, going in a long, over a long-term, multi-phase types of projects. These larger projects tend to create more noticeable community impacts, um, and perhaps opportunities that traditional rezonings might not adequately address. Due to the scale and duration, um, they do require coordination of infrastructure planning, financing, and construction with the phasing of those projects. Developers tend not to want to, um, risk substantial commitments of private capital without knowing that the development standards and the rules will not change as they go through the build-out period. Um, and this, uh, development agreements are thought to be a better way to structure and manage development approvals with the integration into capital facilities programs. Those, the, the adoption process, unlike the reimbursement agreement, um, town council may, but you're not required to establish procedures and requirements, uh, for development agreements by ordinance. Uh, so you can do them as a standalone, one project at a time. We don't need to have, um, a separately adopted ordinance in order to be able to go forward with a development agreement. You do, however, um, you cannot approve a development agreement until you have notice on a legislative hearing. So it has to go to a public hearing. This notice has to specify the location of the property, the property uses, and where a copy of the proposed agreement can be obtained. So before you're, um, even scheduling the public hearing, uh, we have to know what the agreement's going to be, or there has to be a proposal for an agreement to be hashed out at a later time. Um, again, the notice provision under state law, um, the notice is, you mail it to the abutting property owners, um, ten to twenty-five days prior to the hearing. So that's the abutting property owners of the development, not of everything that might be impacted by the development, or where the proposed improvements might be made. Now, in the currently adopted unified development ordinance, um, there isn't a category for development agreements, but typically, um, for these types of projects, such as rezonings, those kinds of things, um, we publish notice on the town website, we, and we mail notice, and now we mail notice to all property owners and tenants within a thousand feet of the project, um, ten to twenty-five days prior to the hearing, and also post the notice on the property at least fourteen days prior to the hearing. Uh, so that's significantly, um, additional notice than the minimum required by state law. Again, it's not specifically called out in the UDO, so that would be a decision, uh, whether you want to go forward, um, with the enhanced notice for a development agreement.
Thousand feet, what is the state requirement?
I'm, this.
So they had a different number, is it?
The state requirement, and, and Jeff might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the, the state, um, requires abutting property owners. I don't know that there's a minimum. We exceed, if there is a minimum, we're still exceeding it. We exceeded it before. It was changed to a thousand.
I'll just come up with a thousand. I'm just curious. So I've, I've seen this, roughly like three hundred or five hundred, or different numbers.
Thousand, roughly a quarter mile, if I do my.
Come up with that number. I'm just curious.
Uh, I believe it was recently changed out of the UDO rewrite, but if Je, if Jeff's still available online, he could probably clarify that.
Yes, that, um, that was something that did come out of the UDO steering committee meetings. Um, there was, we never really got to a point where I would say everybody was kind of on the same page with that particular item, but, um, what we did take away from that was that there was a desire to notice more than just property owners and to notice more than who we had been. Um, taken together with, yeah, taken together with past directives, um, to consider including everybody in a subdivision when it touched a subdivision in the past, um, a thousand feet was kind of where we landed as staff, and that's what we presented to you at the final hearings.
Uh, what do you mean by other than property owners?
Occupants. So sometimes the person who's actually on the property is not the property owner. It's rented to someone else. So this would allow for occupants to also receive notice.
Typically send a notice to the, the owner's address.
So if they're renting.
If they're renting the property, but now we send it to.
Or, yeah.
So, now, if we were three hundred foot, and was that an acceptable amount at the time? Is, I'm trying to say, what triggered going out to a thousand? I'm just curious.
We heard a lot of, we heard feedback from counsel during public hearings when people had not received notice. So over the years, we had heard reactions to why did two people on a street get this, but no one else in the subdivision get it? So that was something we heard, you know, pretty consistently from people, uh, counsel, as well as the public questioning why, why some people were, were notified and some weren't. So one of the many things in the UDO rewrite committees to-do list was looking at things that we had been hearing like that, and, uh, as Jeff said, um, not, not getting noticed to enough people, and then there was also some discussion about notice only being going to property owners, as was already mentioned. Um, so those were, those were factors that the steering committee looked at when they were looking at the UDO.
I'll speak to the, I was on the committee. I could speak to the owners and tenants. I think the thing that came to light was we have more and more multifamily subdivisions and units coming on board, and now that we're doing full bill-to-rent neighborhoods, well, we're not here in Garner yet, but it's a thing. And so what you had is people that are being impacted by the development and traffic generation, or amenities, or services, or whatever, and they weren't getting noticed because to all the property, you might have a thousand people living on that one piece of property, and only the owner of the property is getting the notice. So that was, it was, the drive was to be more inclusive of the people who are living here and being impacted, that they would at least be aware that something was gonna happen versus finding out later, or sometimes after the fact.
Ask who, who is responsible for sending that notice out? Does the town send it out? Or is it, does the potential developer send it out? Where is the cost, uh, absorbed?
I'm sure it's on the town, isn't it?
My understanding is it's the town does this notice.
It's split, yeah, for this notice it would be. For regulars, um, the developer has to cover the neighborhood meeting, and then the town covers the public hearing.
Okay, my question was, who covers the cost of sending the notices out?
There's two different notices that Jeff's mentioning, so there's a notice that is required for the, the pub, the neighborhood meeting that we require developers to do. The developer has to pay for that cost. The statutory requirement, or the, the notice, the UDO requirement we have for notice for the hearing is the town covers that cost.
Okay, I want to proceed.
And then again, under state law, um, planning commission review is not required of this. However, you could, because it, it does not get a consistency review with the, the Garner Forward Plan or some of the other plans, uh, but you could, if you wanted to, you could require that development agreements, um, be reviewed by the planning commission. You'd have to decide on the timing, is that before or after the public hearing, similar to the way you do it with a rezoning. So they're not required to have a role in the review process like they are with other amendments to either maps or the text of the UDO.
Just for my edification, the, uh, the notice goes out to whomever. Now we're saying there's an apartment complex, it could be, let's take an argument, 300 units in there, and it's all renters. How, how's it determined that who gets these? How do they go? This is getting quite complicated.
Yeah, my understanding is it gets pulled from the post office records, so they can tell you all of the individual units that have a mailbox, and then you send it to, to the occupant.
Okay.
I have another question, um, okay, let me frame it simply as I can. What, what was our, was it 300 feet prior to this change that we notified people? Okay, so what, does anybody can tell me an approximate cost increase for the notifications within a thousand feet and to all residences compared to what we did before? Much did we spend on the, I know we can't get an exact figure, but percentage-wise, how much more financial, uh, burden do we carry with the additional notification?
If I were to hazard a guess, it's probably in the neighborhood of three to four times.
One more question. Um, other, do we know what other municipalities in the county require the about, the 1,000 square foot or notification? 1,000 feet notification?
I think we did some of that research early on.
It's, it, I would say most jurisdictions run anywhere between 300 and that thousand. I've not seen anybody over a thousand to my knowledge, um, but a thousand is probably at the upper end.
Is that a trend that we're seeing going in that direction of a thousand feet?
Um, it's certainly more of a recent thing than an old thing. Um, as Terry mentioned before, um, I know the old legislation, I assume it's still this way, it's abutting properties plus those within 100 feet. Um, and so, yeah, as much as we've added the requirement for neighborhood meetings, um, I would say overall that is kind of a, a trend, um, within the planning field, is to try to expand the notice. Um, but we do have other methods. Um, we do have the signs, we do have the postings, so, um, they're all designed and supposed to work together.
Except Raleigh adopted and went the opposite way and have eliminated notices. They've caught some grief over that, and they may go back and do a jointing property owners, but Raleigh eliminated notices, uh, which is a tad on the, you know, swinging a little too far in my opinion. I don't know if a thousand feet's required, but you should, you know, what we did before at 300, you've got to let some people know, especially a jointing property owners, but Raleigh currently does not do that.
Why do they do that?
Because they're not required by law to do that. It's their law. Now, they again have caught, because of this, and we're getting way out of the topic here of this adoption process that Ms. Jones started, and we should probably talk about this later, but anyway, they, they did that so somebody could sell a property in historic downtown Raleigh, that's an acre, and they can sell it for 17, you know, for 20, uh, high-dollar townhomes that'll cost $2 million a piece, that's why.
Just as a, as a reminder though, for, for what Ms. Jones is presenting tonight, she's just bringing forward the requirement that's in the UDO for, for everything a lot that, that would also go to this. So, uh, it, it sounds like there's some questions about the notice in general, and if we need to, to follow up with, with council on that, uh, we can follow up with that after tonight. Um, I know that was, that was what was recommended by the UDO steering committee, it was what was presented in the hearings for the, the UDO and what was adopted by council, but we can circle back to that, um, as a separate topic, if you'd like to do that on another time.
And I really wanted to alert you that you have a choice because development agreements weren't specifically called out in that table of notice requirements. You know, there isn't a specific, um, requirement in our UDO. We would always go with the UDO if it's more stringent than the state. Our UDO couldn't be less stringent at all than the state. So you, you have a choice there, um, for these, how you want to go forward with that. But I just wanted to point out that that is a choice, again, similar to whether you want the planning commission to review development agreements before they come to you, or whether you want them to review it after the public hearing, similar to how rezonings are handled. Uh, you have that option as well.
The question, the question of cost came up. How much does it cost to do these notices? On average, or what, what is sort of the expenditure to send out these letters?
I'm assuming by Silas, nobody knows.
I mean, you, you would have to factor in staff time. I will say that it's, you know, for, for any, for any mailing, no matter how much, there's, there's certain things that have to be done. So I'm just going to estimate an hour or so, hour to two, depending on the, on the volume, plus the postage costs. Um, so you know, your, your cost of a, of a planner, um, to do that, plus your postage.
Hundred dollars? Two hundred? I mean-
Um, again, if you're talking, if you're talking a hundred notices, um, I'd say a hundred or so is probably right.
Jeff, I just have a final question. Uh, the notices, you're talking about some of the other towns are looking 300 to a thousand feet. Uh, in those other towns, does that include non-property owners also, or does that include everybody?
Some of, yeah, some of them do and some of them don't. Um, what, what I'll do is I can, I can update that research if I can put my hands on it. Um, that was about a year and a half ago that we did that, so I'll try and get that updated for you in the next few days.
That would be great, thank you.
Let's get back to Ms. Jones and her-
Another part of the adoption process is recordation. This is a little more simple because it, it does say that the developer has to record the development agreement with the register of deeds within 14 days. That's, you know, probably 26 to $56, but the legislature did help us out by spelling out what the, you know, who was responsible for that cost and, and the obligation to do so. Okay. The development agreement itself has to contain certain provisions. These may seem like they're obvious, but a property description and all of the legal and equitable owners, the equitable owners might be lenders, um, anyone with a property interest in the particular property to be developed. There used to be a requirement on how long of a term they could be for, but now it merely says that the duration must be of a reasonable term. Again, not defined, uh, you determine it from the context, but, um, it doesn't say five years, 10 years, 15 years. It will depend on perhaps the build-out of the development and when the infrastructure will be completed. There must be a listing of all the uses that will be permitted on that property, including population densities and building types, intensities, placement on the site, and design. So the project has to be, um, fairly well-designed before it would be ripe to have a development agreement. So you're not going to, to see these for something that's, um, say a rezoning, that's not conditional in any way, or you don't know how many units would be put on the property. And part of that is so that you can determine what the impacts of that development will be. There also has to be a description of the public facilities that will serve the development, who will provide them, the date of construction, and the schedule to assure that the public facilities will be available concurrent with the impacts of the development. So many times these public facilities are water and sewer, in addition to road improvements and other, other types of public facilities that would be needed, uh, for that particular development. There has to be a description of the reservation or the dedication of land for public purposes, including any agreed to that exceed existing laws for environmental protection. So this has to do with your buffers, um, anything that's going to be put into open space that's for the purpose of environmental protection. There has to be a description of the conditions, terms, restrictions, and other requirements for the protection of public health, safety, or welfare. Uh, and this is, um, what's often touted as the ability to bring the neighbor, um, neighborhood and the developer and the town together, um, to, uh, address things that are particular to very large-scale development projects. And then, to the extent it's applicable, a description of any provisions for the preservation or restoration of historic structures located on the property. Now, um, the limitations, the, within the enabling statute, there are some limitations. And one is that the town may not exercise any authority or make any commitment not authorized by general or local law, and may not impose any tax or fee not authorized by otherwise applicable law. Again, these terms aren't really defined. They are being defined through some case law, uh, as time goes on, um, and more and more jurisdictions, uh, do development agreements. Some of the jurisdictions that are particularly successful with development agreements do have their own independent, um, local legislation that authorizes, um, certain kinds of fees or, or requirements, or they, um, are often used for water and sewer improvements because, um, obviously, you're not going to have any new people, people occupying a dwelling that doesn't have adequate water and sewer service. And also, um, water and sewer is one area where there might be regional cooperation with pump stations, uh, and those kinds of things. But this first constraint is one of those that, um, is still being litigated as to what exactly, what is a tax or fee not authorized by law. The other thing is the developer must comply with all applicable laws, including laws governing permitted uses, density, intensity, design, and improvements, the building code, the fire code. Development agreements are not a way to exempt a developer from other, from your typical requirements of building or development. If there's going to be a guarantee, um, or some kind of surety bond placed on the project to make sure that, uh, what the developer agrees to do will get funded or built, um, it does have to comply with, uh, the bonding requirements that are found in state law. The other limitation is the property will be invested. Um, that, with very limited exception, the town may not apply any newly adopted ordinance or development policies to the development. To some extent, th- this was already law with permit, choice, invested rights, but it just basically means if you have a project that's not going to be built out over 10 to 15 or 20 years, um, there's no opportunity to change, um, and update the regulations applying to that development, um, without the consent of the developer. There's a few minor exceptions for federal and state laws that might change, that might require, um, where the town would be preempted from either not applying that new regulation. Again, once you enter into a development agreement, it can only be amended or terminated by mutual consent. There are, the ability to have some default provisions, but basically you're agreeing to this and, um, the town and the developer will be partners in this agreement, unless you both agree to, to cease the agreement. Again, in some places, this has become an issue, uh, in projects that get started and then a developer or builder might go bankrupt and the project is, um, left partially finished, and the ability to bring in, to some extent, you, they are, a successor, uh, is bound by it, but to make sure that someone can come in and, and finish the project as it was originally These are to be voluntary offers. And so the developer may offer and agree to additional public improvements or payments that are not, um, already prescribed by the UDO. In theory, and I say in theory, a voluntary offer is not an exaction, and it would not be a tax or fee not authorized by otherwise applicable law. Because the developers are bringing forth this, much like conditions in a conditional rezoning, they are offering them, um, so therefore they're not being bound by the town to either perform certain construction or of infrastructure or to make payments. But again, these can be challenged in court, and some of these have been. So voluntary offers should be mutually agreeable in the public interest and not contrary to express restrictions in state law. And voluntary offers should not be severable, meaning, uh, if you do an, uh, development agreement and say the developer's offering to do more than, uh, more road improvements than they would be required to, you know, off-site improvements that are not adjacent to their project, uh, because they offer to do that, uh, and that's an integral part of the development agreement, uh, we wouldn't want that to be severed out of it and then continue to have the other obligations. It's usually part and parcel of, um, entering into this type of agreement, that all of the pieces have to, to flow, or else the, um, at that point, the development agreement should be terminated. So the, the other concerns have to do with recent litigation. So, um, one, there's been recent litigation in Apex that challenged the local government's authority to condemn private property for non-public purposes. Uh, this was the town of Apex, um, a developer, uh, needed to have a sewer line extended to their property through another person's property. They weren't able, the developer and the property owner weren't able to come to an agreement on an easement. They asked the town to go ahead and condemn that easement for them, um, and then that was challenged in court. It turned out that they found that this sewer line benefiting, you know, kind of going to the end of the line through the middle of someone's property was not a public purpose. And so, um, that's actually been to court twice. While it's been in court, the sewer line was installed, and now the question is, does Apex have to remove that sewer line? That's not the end of the story, that litigation's still ongoing. Um, now, with road improvements, um, that are, where you're extending right-of-way, that's an already existing road, where you're putting in like a traffic signal or a roundabout, uh, in general, that's distinguishable from, from sending a sewer line through someone's property to benefit your property. The traveling public, uh, road improvements are open to the public, so it's doubtful that there would be a challenge to a, a capacity improvement on a roadway, on an existing roadway. Now, cutting a road through someone's property, uh, that may be another question, when it's only, when that road's going to terminate in a property and it's only benefiting, you know, if it was going to be a cul-de-sac in that property, it may only benefit that particular property, or there may be a challenge. This case might be an anomaly, we don't know that yet, uh, but it is something to be concerned about, um, whether the town can use the eminent domain authority, um, for private, for private ends essentially. There's also been recent litigation challenging, um, a local government's authority to require construction of off-site road improvements. This was the Mooresville, um, case recently, uh, where the court determined that, um, you can make a developer- that you can make a developer build the roadway within their development or contribute to a program for an off-site improvement, but you can't make them build the off-site improvement. And part of that goes, again, goes back to this eminent domain authority. How do you require a developer to build something on property they don't own? And that they don't have the ability, short of a voluntary acquisition, to actually obtain ownership of that property? So, that's generally where the fee in lieu comes into because they don't have the legal ability to actually build the off-site road improvements. So that, that is another issue. Then, that becomes the onus of both the town to acquire the right-of-way and do the construction of those improvements. So again, that's, you know, another recent challenge. It also, you know, is something to be concerned about. There may be offers where the private developer will pay for the cost of acquisition in order to move the property forward. You know, and that particular issue hasn't yet, as far as I know, been litigated. But that, that may get litigated as well. Another concern is typically, you know, you're dealing with one property owner who comes in, or developer comes in. How do you bind the other developers or subsequent projects? So if, if a project is at the zoning that it needs to be able to develop, they have what you call entitled or by right, so they wouldn't necessarily need certain approvals from town council. Obviously, future developers could volunteer to do this, to enter into similar agreements. But typically, this one project is not creating the entire need for off-site traffic improvements. The other concern we need to be aware of is ex parte communications. So while a development agreement goes to a legislative public hearing, and much like a rezoning, anyone, members of the public, the developer, they can all talk to you about these. These types of large projects, because of their unit count, will be subject to special use permits, which is a quasi-judicial proceeding. So any discussions of the development agreement terms with the developer or the public will have to be disclosed at a subsequent quasi-judicial hearing. One of the other concerns is the timing. So a development agreement can be considered concurrently with a rezoning, including a conditional rezoning. And if so, the term of the development agreement, the terms are treated as a development regulation in the event of a developer's bankruptcy. So this comes out of the state statute. So, in the event of a developer's bankruptcy, it's a requirement that runs with the land. But that leaves the other question, is if it's not a developer's bankruptcy, does it still run with the land? Rezoning conditions, so if you do couple it with a rezoning, those conditions must be consented to by the developer to be incorporated into the zoning regulations for the property. So this goes to whether things are voluntary or not. So if you're, you have the option, you get a development proposal before you, and if you feel that the public infrastructure's not adequate, and you don't have the budget to make, say, the roadway adequate at that point, you do have the option of denying projects outright. But you can't necessarily impose conditions that the developer doesn't consent to. So, that's where I feel it's going to be ripe for litigation in the future as to whether some of these things are truly voluntary or not voluntary by the developers. And when the economy is good, we don't tend to get the litigation on this. When the economy is bad, developers will do their cost-benefit, you know, analysis as to whether it's better to fight things when they don't feel that they can pass these costs on to the end user who is going to be buying the lots or renting the apartments. So I know I've given you a lot of things to think about, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones. I want to ask just one quick curiosity question, I guess. It's under item C of, I think it's 160D, 106, I don't know if you need to see that. But I guess since we earlier this evening talked about an interlocal agreement that involves two governmental bodies, as a provision of this, it says, "If more than one local government is made party to an agreement, the agreement must specify which local government is responsible for the overall administration of the development agreement." I mean, I guess that's sort of understood. I'm just a little curious of that, as to if that happens very often, and how it's decided who's going to administer it, if you know.
If perhaps we, if we receive a development agreement that has a water sewer type component to it, obviously, Raleigh would need to be a party to that agreement as well. And I think what's meant there is, you know, who's going to basically administer that agreement? If, if it's all water and sewer, it may be Raleigh doing that. If it's part roadways and parks and things, you know, other things within the town of Garner, maybe Garner takes the lead. But, but it, it's contemplated, and then it could be similar to roads that we have 401, 1010, that border, you know, Fuquay, Verena, and Garner, or Raleigh and Garner, that perhaps there might be a multi-party with two jurisdictions involved in that. Now, it doesn't say, including like the State Department of Transportation as a partner, but that's potentially a partner. And there's nothing in this that doesn't say multiple developers could also be part of the agreement. In some other jurisdictions that I checked, most of them don't do a multi-developer agreement, but they will do concurrent developer agreements with different property owners and developers that deal with the same types of infrastructure improvements that are needed. But there's nothing prohibiting you from, from doing either one. It, it becomes a complexity and a timing question because not all of the developments are moving at the same rate through the approval process.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll see counsel questions, I'll start with Ms. Behringer. Mr. Singlin.
You're asking us to consider this because it's another tool to, developments that are significantly large and have big impacts, and this, this agreement process, or this option is out there to try to mitigate or soften the impact from whatever it may be, whether it's traffic or this or that, through a development agreement with improvements of whatever it may be. That's whether it's transportation utilities or whatever it may be. That's, this is just another opportunity for a development project to come through. It's just a little different way of looking at things. Because of 160D, this option's available.
Right, and it was available before 160D, but it's relatively new. That's not to say that other places weren't doing things similar to this, but this provides a framework for that. And I do think it, it's a way to time things, to make sure that, you know, you're not stopping all development until, you know, the capacity is there. But you're also making sure, like, the developments don't come in and then try to do the, say, road improvements or the upgrades later, you know, after the development's already there. I mean, part of, part of the fear is that if the project doesn't get completed, then you don't necessarily have the improvements. Typically, a lot of places, road improvements have to be done first. But there's, the development community would like to time it and phase it in so that they can pass those costs on and, and spread their costs over the entire development.
I'll say everything's not up front. Okay, thank you.
But yes, it's basically trying to create another option for large developments.
Ms. Vance, anything?
Questions? No.
Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, so what is your legal represent, recommendation that we do a broad ordinance with process and procedures? Or that we go sort of this individual project route? Or we do a hybrid, where it's kind of a loose framework, and then a more detailed ordinance comes for each project? Do you have a recommendation, or?
So with development agreements, because we're not required to do an ordinance like we are for reimbursement agreements, I would say it's, we're too early to, to create the framework because we don't know of all the different possibilities of developers who are looking to do some of these. A lot of times, we have very detailed conditions of approval on conditional rezonings that specify certain improvements. So, it's already required, we just haven't, you know, formulated it into an agreement somewhat. But there is some risk associated with doing it, particularly where the improvement needed is large and going to be spread out over multiple developments that are not in the same cycle. And making sure that, you know, all of those developments share in the cost or burden. And I have heard from some developers, they're worried about, you know, if they're the first one in getting these improvements done, and then subsequent developers don't have to join in, they be, they are then at a competitive disadvantage because those costs aren't necessarily being passed on to another, the house is in another subdivision. So it's, it's a level, the playing field effort also. Whether, you know, it would be nice if all the developers in a particular area that are being, you know, having the same kinds of impacts on the public infrastructure would get together and give us one joint agreement. That would be ideal, where everybody knows what all the terms are, and they're on somewhat the same, same time schedule. That's unfortunately not reality, so there is going to be some risk associated with going forward with these.
So how does the, the fee in lieu fit in with this sort of larger picture? Is that something we would have to establish? That then contributions would be made into, sort of, then we'd have to have the developer agreement? Or how, how does that fit into this?
There's not a set framework, but, you know, typically, the development agreement's going to say, here's the infrastructure improvements that are needed, and here's who's responsible for building them. In the simplest example, it would be the developer and the town. And the town would do some portion of it that accounts for the growth that's already there or that, or that need, and there's the developer. Very rarely are you going to see a development agreement where the developer's responsible for 100% of the cost. So, the idea is that you apportion whatever their typical cost would be if the town was going forward to do this project as a CIP-type project or a bond project. What would be the developer's impact? How many trips are being generated? Or, you know, what is the need for upsizing water and sewer lines or building a pump station? And then that would be apportioned. And then it becomes, can you compel future developers to abide by the same kind of framework? Depending, and, you know, depending on the timeframe. Again, these can be of, you know, a reasonable duration. So, we don't know exactly what the build out, you know, and, and there is a risk that some project, some property owners will just hold their property and wait out the timeframe and not develop, so that they're, so that they get the benefit of the public infrastructure has been upgraded and the capacity has been improved, but they're not impacting. And, and that's where it's a little uncertain because we haven't contemplated, and we haven't created an ordinance to really regulate that and to figure out what would pass, you know, constitutional muster and what would not invite the General Assembly to, to, you know, legislate in this particular area.
Mr. Matthews, to give you, and Mr. Vance. Yeah, okay, all right. I believe everybody's had a chance to ask questions or comments. Well, thank you, there's a lot of information there to cover.
Yes, we do have a proposal that's been submitted, so I'll be bringing that back to you probably next week to talk about what some of those terms are, to see if you're comfortable with scheduling a public hearing, you know, in the future. So at that point, I'll be asking you, like, the questions of how much notice do you want? Do you want the planning commission to weigh into that? And then to particularly to go over some of the terms that have been contemplated and proposed by this particular developer.
Okay.
Think of any questions. Now, feel free to email me, we will be providing a copy of the slides to you in the SharePoint folder.
Thank you very much, Attorney Jones, we appreciate it. Okay, we have at least one more major item on our agenda. I'm of the opinion that counsel may want to take a break. We've been here about two hours now, so unless you want to move along, I'd say a break of at least 10 minutes would be in order. Okay, all right, so I will declare a recess for 10 minutes. Can be back timely so we can proceed again. Okay, I'm going to declare that we are back in regular session. Thank you, counsel, for coming back on time. And, yeah, we're now at the place in our agenda where we will hear from our assistant town manager, one of them, Ms. Jody Miller, who has a presentation for us. Look forward to it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here before you today. During the spring budget process, council had requested that the staff spend some time thinking about proposing guidelines and a process for identifying priorities for the town's allocation of the American Rescue Plan funding that we received. And so tonight, we're going to provide you a draft copy of guidelines and a prioritization process for the council to consider and ask questions and give feedback on. And so with that, I'm going to just jump right into our presentation this evening.
Please, yes.
Okay. Just as a quick reminder, in March 2021, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law allocating $1.9 trillion across the country for COVID relief and economic recovery due to the pandemic. North Carolina cities and towns will directly receive $1.3 billion of that $1.9 trillion that was approved nationally. Gardner has received a little bit over $10 million of our ARP dollars. And this past spring, council elected to use the standard allowance approach for using our ARP dollars. And if you recall, when we discussed this in the spring, what that allowed us to do is to really open up the opportunities for what the funding could be spent on. The original guidelines coming from the U.S. Treasury were very limited on what these dollars could be spent on. It also provides an opportunity to widen the timeframe from when these dollars could be used. And so tonight's discussion is going to talk about guidelines and priority processes for thinking about how to spend those dollars, as well as provide some examples of some of the possible projects or initiatives that may fit within these guidelines and priorities. So as you recall, even before we decided to have this discussion on a more formal guidelines and prioritization process, the council had committed some of the town's ARP funding for some specific projects and initiatives that you're interested in seeing completed. We have our CLUE study, the Economic Development Site Assignments, the Housing Affordability Workshop, and our Cost of Municipal Services Analysis. All these requests and directives came out of your retreat back in February, and we identified the town's ARP funding to be able to pay for them. In addition to these studies and initiatives, we also included $400,000 in the current year budget for the town's perform budget, so that's going to go towards maintenance and repair for town facilities and properties. So when you take into account these dollars and the amount of money that the town has been provided, there's about $9.1 million still available possibly for spending. So the draft guidelines and prioritization process that I'm going to walk you through in just a moment really came out of doing an examination of examples and best practices from other communities, not only here regionally, but also nationally. Just wanted to make you aware, looking at the guidelines we're proposing tonight, some examples came from places like Wake County and Durham County, the city of Durham. Both of the Durham city and county I'm very familiar with. I was directly involved in their work when I still worked for Durham County. Also, looking at Pueblo, Colorado, was also provided as sort of a best example of the work they're doing, in particular, the rubric that they use to determine priorities, and then also following the GFOA recommended guiding principles. So I'm going to bring up now the document that you have in your packet. So we put together an entire packet of information for you to review that kind of takes you to where we are in our discussion point. So it gives you some of the background about the dollars, some of the U.S. Treasury's guidelines in decision-making, gives you some information that ICMA has put out there based on some survey information they've gathered about how other communities are considering spending their dollars, as well as looking at our draft, where we provided and received some of our examples and best practices. So taking all that information and pulling it together, we also drafted these guidelines so they're tailored to the town's specific needs. So what you're going to see on the draft guidelines are proposals based on what councils had discussions about in the past or priorities that you've identified. So looking at the list of the proposed guidelines for ARP use for the town of Gardner, the first would be looking at project prioritization that supports the town's strategic, capital, comprehensive, and economic development plans, or any other assessments endorsed by council. The second guideline would look at projects that reflect strategic transformative data-driven opportunities and solutions. The third would be look at identifying strategic one-time projects or looking for financial sustainability strategies for projects that require ongoing operating and capital funding. And this is something that GFOA really stresses in their recommended principles, that as we're thinking about strategic investments of ARP dollars, it really makes sense to focus on those one-time opportunities, or if you want to think about investments in terms of other opportunities that require multi-year funding or ongoing funding, making sure you have that ongoing funding source identified as well. Use ARP funding to fill funding gaps created by inflation increases and supply chain issues as we've seen with some of our CIP or bond projects. And we've talked a little bit this evening about what some of those projects may look like, and I'll give you some examples here in just a few minutes. Look at leveraging the ARP funds with federal, state, and local community resources when feasible to optimize the overall allocation. Collaboration and partnerships with governmental and community stakeholders are strongly encouraged as part of our guidelines that are being proposed. Preference given to projects within the town's corporate limits. Projects that include environmental sustainability's goals, practices, and/or elements given preference as far as looking at our prioritization. Opportunities to support and invest in the town's workforce given preference. Return on investment should be considered when looking to invest in a project. Performance metrics should be integrated into the project planning and implementation. ARP-related expenditures should be tracked and reported publicly. And finally, a rubric should be established to evaluate and prioritize the projects. So we have a lot of potentially guiding principles and guidelines that would help determine how this funding should be spent, and we need a way to evaluate that. That takes me to the next handout as part of your packet. We've created a draft prioritization rubric to help in the evaluation. There are lots of potential opportunities that may fit some of the guidelines, so we need a way to really be able to evaluate them to really determine which are high priorities. So what you'll see in this particular rubric is a scoring mechanism that follows the guidelines. So at the very top, you'll see aligns with town plans, is data-driven, evidence of financial sustainability, supports the CIP or the 2020 bond, 2021 bond initiatives, looking at leveraging other funding, provides opportunities for collaboration and partnerships within the town limits, supports environmental sustainability, supports investment in the town's workforce, shows a return on investment, and provides an overall performance evaluation of that investment. And with each of the categories, there's a score of 0 to 4. So each opportunity or proposal would then be scored against the rubric here with the highest score, considering to be the most impactful or the highest priority. So we talked about guidelines, sort of the overarching perspective of guidelines that the council may consider in making funding decisions regarding ARP. We've talked about a tool that we've developed that helps then take those guidelines and really focuses them down to help us prioritize those opportunities. So what does that look like in terms of projects, opportunities, initiatives that we currently have before the town? And so that's what you're going to see on this next chart here. This was developed just to give you a sense of some of the projects and some of the initiatives that would fit within the guidelines that are being proposed, to give you a sense of what cost estimates we have for them, or we have more refined costs, to give you a sense as to what they may include, but also to let you know there are some few pending opportunities that may be out there in the future that we want to make sure we capture, but we may not know the exact funding amounts that may be needed for them. All these projects and opportunities come before you as part of discussions that the council had in the fall of 2021, as you started thinking about the ARP funding, as well as some of the discussions we've had through the budget process as well. So to kind of walk you through it, we've sort of come up with four categories to help organize this. Unfunded CIP and bond projects, so under there, we would have Station 5. We talked about that this evening. The Splash Pad project, as well as the inclusive playground project, could be included under there, as well as any work or improvements for the Meadow Brook Dam. Under community development and affordable housing, we've identified the DFI workshop as something the council wants to pursue. There may be some opportunity, and there's been some interest expressed among council members about potentially working with Wake on some affordable housing projects, and there may be an immediate opportunity for a multifamily project in the near future. Under economic development, downtown parking, the federal earmark project, we know based on when the grant was submitted and the increase in cost of projects, that there's a gap in funding, and so we've identified that. We've also included here the LMG deck. That's something that the council has been committed to that has yet to identify a funding source, as well as our ED site assessment study. And then there's been some discussion about possible utility extensions for key projects throughout the town as economic development opportunities as well. And then under strategic priorities, I mentioned a few of these earlier that the council has already committed to. The CLUE study, PERFORM are two of those things. We also know in our CIP that we have an opportunity for to buy some public works facility property. And then, as you're aware, Manager Dickinson has been made you aware of his recommendation to move forward with an employee retention bonus program to help with our recruitment and retention strategies here with the town. So in addition to that, we have the Municipal Services Study work that we are working on now to get a proposal, to get an estimated cost for that. And then there's been some interest among council about opportunities for sustainability and green investments. Now, this is just the immediate list that staff has been able to come up with. I'm sure there's a lot more to add to these lists, but wanted to give you a sense, when we talk about guidelines and priorities, what type of projects and initiatives would fall under these areas potentially? The bottom also just does show a little bit of quick math as well. So it just kind of gives council a sense, although $10 million is a lot of money, we know that we only have $9.1 million to spend that hasn't been dedicated to other sources or needs right now, and we have a lot of opportunity and need as we've identified above, plus I'm sure there's more to add. And so just wanted to give a sense as to what those dollars would look like as far as availability of funding, especially if we were to keep the LMG parking deck project as part of a possible ARP project as well, or what the availability of additional funding would look like if we decided to take out the parking deck and finance it using a different So draft guidelines are next steps. Tonight starts the conversation with council on what's being proposed as the guidelines and prioritization process. So we're looking to get your feedback and reviews based on what's been provided and drafted by staff. Once we receive that, we look to finalize the guidelines and the rubric and then bring it back to council for approval. So that'll be the official policy documents that are used by council and by staff for making decisions when we look at opportunities for spending the ARP dollars. So we would bring that back, and as projects and opportunities presented themselves that would fall within the guidelines, they would then be rated through our rubric system and brought back to council with additional information about projects and opportunities. We'd also like to gauge council's interest in moving forward with the retention bonus recommendation that Manager Dickerson has brought forth as well. We'd like to go ahead and start that process sooner than later, and with council's concurrence tonight, we would put a budget amendment on the September 6 agenda to go ahead and approve those dollars and get that process started. So I have covered a lot at relatively late in the evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and certainly any feedback or comments, please share them with us as we finalize the guidelines and the rubric for council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. I'm just wondering, council and staff members who are here, would there be some benefit in perhaps dealing with the last item first, the guidance on retention bonus recommendation, and go ahead and and make some approval on that? Or do you want to take it in the sequence otherwise? I would suggest we deal with that, and then we can go back to the other items.
Certainly the pleasure of council.
Council okay with that? Okay. So all council members have received information from the town manager regarding this issue and recommendations relating to that, and we've had discussions about the competitive employment circumstance that we find ourselves in. And I would open it up for council to to weigh in on the issue. Several of you, maybe all of you, I don't know that I saw them all, have responded via email to to him, but this would be a forum that we could have any further discussion you want to have and and give, I think, some final word on this issue. I hope council is ready to do that. I hope council is ready to do that. So with that being said, I'll let, I can, I guess, select someone or let somebody jump out who wants to initiate your own observations on this issue. Mr. Vance, I'll start with you. How's that?
First of all, I agree with moving forward with discussion of this bonus, bonus for retaining of our employees and there's, in my opinion, based upon what I've seen within local government, state government, with the retention of employees, there has been a significant increase in salaries and particularly in DOT, in certain specialties, in order to maintain, maintain and get talent into, into certain positions. So what has, what has been proposed, I'm looking at it right now, I believe that we are on the right track knowing the difficulties that we have with trying to maintain good talent. This may be factor in retaining that talent that we currently have moving forward, knowing that we have some positions that are lacking behind in, lacking behind when it comes to average wages within other municipalities to make us more competitive. I think that this is a good start with, in the right direction.
Thanks, sir. Okay. I'll just come around to my right and go to Mr. Dellinger next.
Yeah, just for the benefit of the public, if you could outline the structure of this proposal.
Okay. Okay, I will kind of give an overview of the retention proposal that's for council. As you know, over the last, you know, few months and probably going back, you know, as far as a year or so, we've had trouble with recruiting positions. We also have seen some employees leave for other opportunities for various reasons. So the management team and HR and others have just been brainstorming ideas and looking at some best practices around the area and even around the country of ways that we can continue to retain our valuable talent and stay up to staff on everything that we're doing and be able to provide the services at the level we need to provide it. So one thing that we've seen a number of local governments do is provide retention bonuses, and a number of those have done that locally using their ARP funds, which it's allowable use. And so one thing that I proposed and staff put together is a $3,000 limit on the retention bonus, and it would be paid out over time because the premise is to entice employees to stay longer. So if you gave it to them all at once, you know, and they left, then that would not be what we were looking for.
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, it's $4,000.
$4,000, okay. $4,000, okay. Oh, okay. I'm thinking about the other, the other bonus. Yeah, $4,000, thank you. And so we would, we would provide a certain amount at the beginning, and then we would do another payment a few months later, and then the final one in February. And hopefully that would show employees appreciation and also, you know, show them that, you know, Garner is an employer of choice and that we value their talent and the things they're doing each and every day. And so that's just one of the tools that we put forward for your consideration.
Mr. Manager, if I could add a little bit more detail to it.
Yes, I'll get to that page.
It's designed so that it's a tiered approach, so employees making less than $60,000 would receive that top amount, which that $4,000 we mentioned. It would be three payments, September, December, and February, and they'd be staggered amounts. And the idea is, is we want to reward our employees for staying with us and the excellent value that they provide and service they provide in our community, but also we want to spread it out long enough so that it's a retention bonus, so it's an encouragement for people to continue to, to stay with the, the organization. And so employees making between $60,000 and right under $100,000 would receive $3,750 and would be provided three payments within that same timeframe, staggering amounts. And then employees making over $1,000 would receive, $100,000 would receive $3,000, but also receive three payments over the same timeframe. This very much mirrors what Wake County has already done and implemented. They implemented theirs starting in the spring, and so they've actually, I think March was their first payment, this, this month was their second, and I think they're doing their third payment in December. So it's very reflective of not only what the county's seeing, but what we're seeing in the region. And as Mr. Dickerson said, opportunities for retention bonuses across the country.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, Ms. Behringer, do you have any observations?
One thing I would add real quick, sorry, Mr. Mayor, is that this is for full-time employees, so that's the way it's structured. Part-time supplemental would not qualify for the incentive. Important distinction, and we put some other guidelines behind that too, based on performance.
One question, this is a one-cycle bonus, or is it going to be an ongoing one over time?
It's, it's basically one time, but paid in three tranches. So after the February payment, we would have expended all of funds to do this and there would not be another round. Unless we found another funding source and another program later, but we're only proposing to do this, this one time.
Mr. Matthews?
Sounds well thought out. I think it'd be a good tool to help people out, especially in these times, and right through the hollow.
Okay, Ms. Singleton?
Again, the proposal is September, December, and February, was that it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I think I heard from everybody on council. As far as I'm concerned, we could go back, I guess, and take these bulleted items.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to the, the next items of discussion, so just to make sure it's clear, so with the concurrence of council tonight, we're going to add a budget amendment to the September 6th agenda that authorizes the payment of the ARP one-time dollars for the one-time retention bonus program, so that we can start to implement that in probably the last pay period in September.
You want to do a thumbs up on that? Is everybody in agreement?
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure that we're clear, so when you see it on the September 6th agenda, you're clear sort of what that formal action that the council needs to take in order to allocate those dollars to move that forward. So thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you, Ms. Miller, sure enough. Would you prefer for us to sort of go by these item by item in terms of the guideline next steps?
Sure. So let me, I'll bring up again the document that has, that we were all sort of reviewing and using, and the first opportunity there were the guidelines.
Also, you see those items and you've heard the explanation there. Comments or questions on this item? Start on my left.
At this moment, no, sir.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Nothing right now, sir.
Okay. On my right, Ms. Behringer? Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
A question on the, the process as you're sort of mapping it out, is that we would create the tool and then projects would come and they would use this rubric. And then I have two questions related to that. One, who, who uses the rubric internally? Who are the raters? Is it council that would rate them? The other is, if you're rating them and they're not coming all at once, they're not stacked against each other. So the question is, is there a threshold below which a project is low-scoring? So if they're not coming all at once, they're not ranked against each other. They're coming, was it, this is a 10, is that good? I don't know. So I'm trying to get a better feel for how the ratings work into using them relative to other projects, some that may not be on our radar yet.
So there's sort of two, two responses. The first is the, the rubric tool and the guidelines approved by council would be used by staff to provide recommendations to the council. So it would be one of the tools that we would use in order to make a recommendation for ARP funding. So just like we would bring forth an agenda item with a recommendation on a contract or funding or those kinds of things, it would be one of those opportunities and resources that we would use to then provide a, a recommendation that comes back to council. As far as actually using the tool, we envisioned using it in such a way where we've sort of provided a preliminary list of things that we've heard council is interested in seeing use some of these dollars for. We would look at those projects, use that rubric, and let you know how it's scored out as far as opportunities. The nice thing about the rubric is it's designed in such a way that there are lots of opportunities in projects that may score high because not every area, you may not always get the highest or lowest in every particular area. It's diverse enough that it gives sort of a level playing field for projects and initiatives. And so we would, we would recommend bringing forth the projects as we've identified or other potential initial projects, using that rubric as a recommendation. So we could do it in a timeframe of, set up a calendar or schedule where we could bring forth where we knew there were opportunities for the council that was interested in for using those dollars. Or we could look at it on a case-by-case basis and use that as part of our overall analysis and recommendation. So we could do it both ways. I will share with you, as we put together the list of projects and opportunities and we're looking at the amount of dollars, there are limited dollars available. So as we look at making decisions on spending those dollars, if there are specific initiatives or specific projects that the council has said, has a consensus on, we'd like to make sure we set aside X amount of dollars for these types of things. We would look at doing those in terms of those dollars and then be able to look at projects and evaluate the projects using the rubric based on the guidance from council. And communities are doing it, you know, very similar ways, depending on what their needs and opportunities are, and depending on how much available funding they have.
I think the recommendation of doing the tool and then taking the list of, a list of proposed projects, applying the tool to those projects helps us measure them on like terms, because if they come, again, a project scores a 40, and we're like, that's amazing project, and then a month later, there's an 80 project, it's like, oh, we ran out of money, we can't do that 80 project, we did this 40-ranked project. So I think with the data that you have, getting the tool and then bringing the same list of projects back or in addition to other projects that council hears about, and then applying the rubric to all of those, it would help us to see the strong projects that meet the conditions versus the others, and then we make a decision on, we're going to leave a little bit of money left over because we don't know if something might come along in six months that we're not aware of. I think that'd be helpful, otherwise we lose that relativism on that this rubric is supposed to help us, you know.
And I think we had the same, the same thoughts, and that's going to be sort of the balance we need to define with the timing of the need and opportunities and going through the evaluation process, but also making sure that we're investing in the strategic transformative projects that the council has interest in. And so this provides sort of a level playing field to be able to do that, looking at data, looking at outcomes, and being able to, even if a project doesn't rank high enough through ARP funding, it still may have value, and we may look at doing it from some other resource as well.
If there is some project or something you have in mind or category that's not on the table now, I mean, now would be good. I mean, you don't know right now everything, but anything we can add now, better.
Yeah, I think the focusing on the tool is the next, is the priority, so there's time to add the projects or, you know, add, give feedback on that later as well. So I just wanted to make sure we have the process right, so the tool is most effective.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance, anything? So I suppose that one of the main objectives is, is second bullet, the finalizing guidelines and the priority rubric. I mean, to me, the priority rubric is a, is a, is a good tool. If there's a better one out there, I'm not aware of it, but I think the way that's laid out gives you a, what I would call a good scoring methodology that I would think would be considered objective, I suppose, as opposed to subjective.
And it's tailored specifically to the town's needs, interests, and priorities, so.
Exactly. So any comments on the draft ARP priority rubric?
So I got to ask this question. Ms. Miller, can you go down further to the town of Garner Funding Options? Right here, okay. So these are all things we've kind of agreed that we want to do. Whether we go through an assessment or not, we've kind of agreed that we want to do them. So if you've kind of agreed that you want to do them, are we going to talk about doing those and the tools for the difference? Because we've kind of all agreed that we're going to do these. So I'm thinking, while we can go through the process of scoring all these, if, we got to do Fire Station 1, that's not an option. We got it, we just said we're going to do the employee retention. On strategic priorities, we said those things are important. The items, unfunded CIP bond projects are all important, we've talked about. The workshop is important. Yeah, I mean, so we basically said we're going to do all these, whether, I don't care what the score says or not, that's what we've decided we're going to do. So are we talking about doing the whole difference or what remains? If we decide to, to do a, a borrowing process fully deck and you have the money left over? So I'm just trying to figure out if we can, if we can score all this stuff, which we already said we want to do? Are we going to score all that and say, well, you know, we've talked about the inclusive playground, the splash ground, and we don't have enough money to park some regular bonds, but we're not going to do it because it doesn't score high enough? I'm just wondering.
So I'll, I'll give you my reaction and I'll let the rest of council weigh in. So we provided these examples to give you ideas of what types of projects or initiatives that would fit under the guidelines, where we would look at them and say, if we evaluated these on the rubric, which one would become, you know, priorities based on the scores? And so these are really based on opportunities where the council has already said they want to commit dollars to, or we know that we have a gap in funding for projects, and Station Five's a good example, that we have got to move forward, or that we know are on the horizon and that we want to do, that may be good investments for one-time funding of ARP dollars. Now, that doesn't mean that's the only way to fund them, but these were the, the projects that kind of rose to the top as we were talking about and thinking about what draft guidelines would look like and then how we would help prioritize them as part of council's overall decision-making process. Kind of when you, when you look at the total amounts, to your point, Mr. Singleton, you know, you take out the, the parking deck piece of it, and even adding in everything that we've included here, there's still over $3 million of sort of undecided dollars for ARP dollars that the council would need to consider and think about what we would want to spend them on. But certainly, some of these other projects, we could find other funding sources for, whether we finance them, whether we looked for grants, other kinds of things potentially, and so that potentially could free up more dollars, which we then would, you know, look at opportunities for using the guidelines and the rubrics on those opportunities as well.
We're not going to score the things that you've already given us authorization to do, like the CLUE study, we're already in the middle of that. PERFORM, that's already been approved. Retention, you just approved that, and then the DFI workshop, we've, you've already authorized us to do that. So those would not be scored, they were just examples.
I agree, but I mean, the way, the way we scored the retention bonus is you throw a thumbs up. So I mean, just seeing this out, I mean.
So in that particular case.
Do we need to say, well, we've already committed to these, so let's, as Ms. Miller said, let's look at the difference if you decide to use a different funding tool for the parking deck? I'm just saying, since that's kind of what we've talked about, and we can talk about each and every one of them again, but they're priorities that because of increased project cost, that some of our bond monies aren't available for to assist with. So that's what I'm just saying.
But I don't think we, I don't think we've agreed, I think we've agreed on these projects. I don't think we've agreed that ARP money is the funding mechanism for them. That's the distinction, I think.
Like the public works facility, we've had other discussions about including that with a borrowing package because of ways to collateralize that. So, so although Ms. Miller didn't include that in subtracting it out with the parking deck, you could, you know, you could say that there's, there are other ways to fund it that there may not be for some of these other things.
For the purposes of this example, the parking deck was sort of a big-ticket item for the amount of money we had left. So we wanted to sort of subtract that in, in terms of really if we were to look at refinancing that or financing it through a different mechanism, what would the available dollars be? But to Mr. Hodges's point, there, there are other things, whether it's the public works facility property, you know, additional, the splash pad or inclusive playground project, looking at opportunities for financing those differently. What that also means is it could delay some of those projects. So the opportunity that we have with ARP dollars is So, the opportunity that we have with ARP dollars is the town has received both tranches. So, we have our $10 million available to us. And so, moving forward with some of these projects, things that are, have become, you know, priorities for the council and that we're, we're hearing from council that you want to see us move forward and get things started sooner than later, funding it through ARP provides us an opportunity to do that more quickly. And so, that's part of also, as we were thinking about the guidelines, the rubric and some opportunities, that's why some of these projects made the list.
Certainly, we'd stretch some of our bond funds a little bit far. Just looking at item one, for example, the inclusive playgrounds, splash pad, those type of things, it was, we were figuring into bonds, if this would pay for it, that would stretch those bonds to further to do other items that we might need or cost overrides that we've run into, so. Because as often, we didn't take, we've taken some of these out already, like the one we've been on tonight, I think there's some others here, like the splash pad and the inclusive playground, you know, if that's going to be away from the other park, that's something that could already, we could go ahead and move on, those type items.
To my point about getting the tool, getting all these projects into the tool and measuring them so we can see how they compare for the guidelines that are, were included, so the proposed guidelines are sort of transformative, the priorities, strategic plans, all these things, then we can see, is this how we want to use these funds or do we want to fund it somewhere else? Because I, for example, one of the main ones was a sort of financial, sustainability, bringing in, leveraging the funds, bringing in other partners. Some of these items don't do any of that. And so, again, I've preached from kind of the beginning, it's trying to find ways to leverage this money and turn 10 million into 20 million and not just, you know, spend it on one-time projects, let's try to leverage it so that we can get more bang for our buck that we won't get otherwise, so.
What if we took what you had here and go ahead and run it through your unit of measure and see how they, how did it pick out?
I think we can do that. What I would ask for guidance from the council on is the parking deck project. Is that something that council would consider using ARP dollars for or would you prefer us to bring different strategies for financing? Because that, that really opens up the discussion in a different way regarding review of the rubric and the guidelines.
Different strategy. Again, the ones in the first column, we basically said, and we've already done, we've already committed one and a half million dollars, we're going to vote on it Monday night, so that one and a half is already committed. Again, these other projects, you know, we, yeah, we can wait for grants, I mean, we got a part of grant for the Jürgen project, but we thought those may be included in one of the park projects, but because of the cost, it hadn't. So, I mean, we said we're going to do that and we have to address the dam, that's no issue. I mean, that's, I'm sorry, not no issue, that is an issue, there's no question that we have to do that. So, I have, I see no reason to score some of the things that we've already said that we would like to do. There are other opportunities to do that, but if you take the deck out and also, if there's a way to, the public work facility property can be done, then again, that money goes, again, I believe from three, $3 million to, excuse me, yeah, $3 million if you take that out of $4 million and there may be some other opportunities. But, yeah, all of these things can't be leveraged because they're one-time projects. I mean, that's just, unless we want to wait five years, I mean, everybody in Wake County has got a splash pad at the corner. And that's something that's been talked about for years. I'm not saying that's a pet project, but we've talked about doing that for our, our kids for years and we're just, you know, parks and wreck, spent the time, provided a location, boom. And y'all even, I think, put out a project where it could be done or a schedule where it could be done in a, you know, a relatively rapid amount, pretty fast compared to where it was before it was in this discussion. So, I'm just saying, I don't need those scored. I don't need the strategic priorities scored. I mean, we, again, the night, we committed 2.5, $6 million in two projects, just like that, and we sure didn't score them. Let's stop doing this. So, I'm just like it is, I mean, some of these, we're not going to leverage the bonus and we're not going to leverage the fire department, excuse me, the fire station.
Mr. Singleton, if I could add just another perspective to this, a lot of communities are using the guidelines and a rubric approach to be able to share publicly with their communities or the decisions that the councils or the boards are making regarding ARP dollars because they were dollars provided to communities for not only pandemic recovery, but also trying to create transformative outcomes in communities. Communities have found it useful using this approach to be able to then explain how decisions and priorities were determined for ARP dollars, which are separate than bond dollars, which are separate from financing dollars and those kind of things for specific projects and opportunities. And so, what you'll, you'll find is, is the communities will go through this process and even if there's been a commitment that we're moving forward with this project, we'll want to go through and score, be able to show why this is a good use of these dollars compared to some other funding source because of the priority and guidelines that the council or board has adopted. So, that just shares another perspective.
And but the four projects on the left were, we thought, coming out of the bond project, but they did not. And I understand what you're saying, but we already heard from the public, they wanted all these. The, excluding the dam remediation, no one really knows about that. So, we're just doing what the public thought they were supporting in the bond project last November because they supported the fire station, they supported Recreation Parks and Wreck projects, which included those two items. So, that's what I'm saying, you can score them while you want. I don't think that this council is going to change how they're going to vote on. I'll rephrase how I'm saying, we can score them, but I don't think on those projects, they're just not going to change, just like the ones on the right that you currently have, excluding the public works facility project. I don't think, we're already doing Clue, we done performing, we did the retention, so they're already done.
How we fund it may change.
On what?
Any of the projects that have not been obligated.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just, the only, I mean, you done Clue, you done perform, that was in the budget and you just did the retention bonus. So, those, there's no way to change those.
Right.
Okay, there's no way to change the fire station. I mean, again, the other ones, the two parts, you could get some kind of a parking wreck grant, but again, that delays the process and we told people last year that was going to be part of a park project, that was projected to be part of a park project, we hoped.
So, because we've allocated and spent some of this money, we shouldn't try to leverage any of the rest of it.
I didn't say that, I've said, we've already committed quite a bit of this, you might be able to leverage, if you take them out of there, it'd be $4 million, I'm sure.
I think, well, part of what I'm hearing is.
You've got to go through a process that we're going to come back to the same result and I'm going to sit here and say, "We went through all this and we're going to do this and we're going to do this." Again, we made two decisions tonight, bang, bang, for 2.1, 2.5, $6 million and we didn't do no scoring. Now, if we want to score, we can put the Fire Station 5 off, but I don't think we're going to do that, nor we're going to do the retention bonuses.
No, we're definitely not going to put that off. I guess, is there an opportunity to find other?
So, the scoring mechanism, any scoring mechanism, is not to create completely objective criteria, it's to rate projects against them. And there are other qualitative matters that we may, that may take precedent over the scoring, but it's to help us try to rank these projects and prioritize them based on criteria that we also just were presented on leveraging and doing this other stuff. It's not the end-all, be-all where it's below this threshold, we're not going to do it, it's a fire station, didn't make the cut. There's still a legislative deliberative process around it, but for all these other projects, I mean, Splash Pad, we're going to do it. Well, have we tried to raise any other money for it? Have we tried to get other grants? Have we tried to look for donors who are going to match? The town says we'll put in 250, somebody come in and get 250? We haven't even tried to do that. So, we don't know if we can leverage it or not. We haven't tried.
To, to me, yeah, I mean, I, it's the methodology, I think, that keeps you consistent with this thing and you're able to demonstrate. But his favorite project or whatever, we went through a process that was deliberative and is consistent across the board.
In some cases, it is, but we went through a process last fall with a bond information package and a bond vote for the items on the left.
Right, but those are bond monies, right?
They were projected to be bond monies until the cost of construction and projects went so high, yes, sir.
So, we're talking about ARP funds now, so that.
That's correct.
Puts it in a different context, but.
Does it?
Can I ask a quick question? I'm supposing, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm supposing that one of the reasons you're asking council to go ahead and take a position on the LMG deck because, I mean, that, that stands out as, as a major expenditure of the monies.
It does, and so, that really changes the conversation. If that's something that the council wants us to put through the process, just looking at the quick math at the bottom there, you'll see there's not enough available dollars left to cover everything on this list. So, opportunities for additional investments or new projects would not be available if we included the parking deck as part of the ARP dollars.
My first question would be, what would be the changed cost in financing the deck with the interest rates where they are? Two is, we wouldn't have to do, we could spend half, we could pay half the debt with ARP funds and finance the rest. It's not all or none, but we need that cost estimate revised.
Right, and that would be something we would work with Davenport on to look at the financing costs. And I know we've had initial conversations with them, but now that we're getting to a place of finalizing the master agreement, getting closer to understanding costs, understanding potential funding strategies that the council may consider for the parking deck, we can certainly get more refined scenarios from, from Davenport. As I mentioned, these were provided as examples of things to help provide context and, and projects and initiatives, sort of understanding to when we talk about guidelines, when we talk about the rubric, what types of projects and initiatives may be included based on previous decisions and discussions the council has had.
What if you did this? Go ahead, some of them we've already approved and I know some I agree with Gray that we're going to move on and have, if it satisfies the majority, go ahead and score them. So, we've done our due diligence, that way, we can say, "Well, here's, here's your top projects now. Board, which ones you want to go with first?", which I, I think a lot of them is going to rise to the surface, like Splash Pad, your Fire Station, those type of things, the dam, public works, but that'll put them in a priority like you want to do. If that's okay with you guys, let them go ahead and score them all.
So, we'll, by scoring them, we'll essentially be confirming what we already know on some of these things. Is that?
That you're correct.
I would say confirming, but also prioritizing. So, and prioritizing in terms of what would you like to see one-time ARP dollars invested in as part of strategic investments for the town. Some cases, I think to Mr. Singleton's point, and this is difficult because with project overruns as far as costs and escalation costs, we're seeing some of the projects, even with the bonds approved just last fall, we're needing additional dollars for. So, there's an opportunity for one-time investments for those projects that we know we support that are going to move forward to be able to make those investments because they're a priority and a commitment that the council has made. But some of the other projects, what that does is it gives us an opportunity to prioritize them, to say, "Here's where they are as prioritization based on the guidelines," and then we can start looking at, "Well, what does it make sense as far as the available dollars for ARP to do those investments?" And then, if other projects, do we want to look at other funding opportunities to move them forward? And then, are there, are there things that aren't on this list that the council has talked about, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's economic development, that you would like to see some money set aside for those opportunities that will present themselves, you know, maybe in the near future, maybe a year from now, as opportunities for strategic one-time investments for ARP dollars? And that's the nice thing with using the ARP dollars and the standard allowance approach, you have the time to do this work and to be thoughtful about it, even with making some initial decisions for some of the dollars for some of the immediate needs.
Anybody else care to weigh in at this time? The bottom line is, is, well, and I'm just reading from the agenda, council, action is called for is to review and provide feedback on the draft guidelines and priorities framework. Part of that, I guess, is, is the methodology or the rubric. We've already approved the, the retention bonus, so that matter is settled and resolved at this point in my mind.
Yes.
Would that be a fair statement?
See, that's what I'm hearing consensus from council is. So, you'll see a budget amendment on your meeting on the 6 appropriating those dollars for that purpose. So, based on tonight's discussion of the guidelines and the rubric, we'd like any additional feedback or comments about that framework. And once we get any comments or feedback from council, what we'd like to do is bring that back to council for your official approval and adoption as this is the policy tool or guide that you want staff to use when evaluating projects and opportunities in terms of possible ARP investment. And so, at that point, it gives us the green light to then use it as one of the tools that we use as far as information and recommendations moving forward to the council.
We do a thumbs up on that tonight, Mr.?
Well, I mean, we can formally vote on it if we need to.
Well, this would be something I would bring back to the September 6 meeting as well for formal adoption, pending any revisions or updates or edits that the council would like made.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's reasonable. You're going to take this discussion and go ahead and bring back for a vote those items that you just mentioned, right?
Right, so, we'll bring back the packet of information that you saw excluding that last sheet of options. That was more of an example for official approval of the council, that this is the town's guidelines and rubric we're going to use as we evaluate ARP investments.
Counsel?
So, a point of clarification from me, we're just looking at the rubric tool as a, as a, I guess, to say, as a tool to use in this decision-making project, decision-making process as to what we would like to use ARP funds for.
So, the guidelines kind of help narrow down possible uses for, or investment for ARP. The rubric helps prioritize those items once they've been identified. Once, once we've identified that an opportunity, an initiative or project meets the guidelines that have been endorsed by council, then it runs through the rubric and we identify how it's prioritized against other opportunities and projects.
Counsel, okay, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a given that that would be the reasonable thing to do is, is to bring that back and affirm from the council that, that's the, that's the direction we're going in, the method we're using.
Sounds good.
Anybody have, have any other objection?
Counsel, well, thank you for your time and interest in this topic. We will bring this back to you at your September 6 meeting for final adoption as well as the budget amendment on the retention bonus, so thank you.
Was there anything else you needed?
I think that's it for tonight.
Okay, all right. Don't pressure your luck too much. No, please. All right, if there's nothing else, Ms. Miller, then I'm down to the item E, I believe, under managers' reports.
Yes. Mayor, Town Council, your report, you have the pending agenda report in the back and lays out the meetings for the next three meetings in September. And as you can see, the meeting on the 20th is pretty heavy with public hearings and may add another one in addition to that, so there may be some things getting moved around or some things may even come off, but that's just kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Got some announcements, just some reminders, the Connect Conference on September the 8th. And I know John was saying, I know we needed some RSVPs on that, final RSVPs. If you want to attend, we kind of need to give them a notice tomorrow so we can go ahead and secure those spaces.
We need to confirm, I guess, is it the bus tour, do we, is that part of it or?
It's an optional part and I think that early on, we had heard from the mayor and Ms. Behringer and possibly Mr. Vance, I'm trying to remember if Mr. Vance was on that list about the Connect Conference. Had you told us about that for that and the bus tour? So, so, those are the three confirmations we had for the conference and the bus tour. Mr. Delanter just let me know he was not, he, he was pending a schedule, so he just let me know that. So, if Mr. Singleton or Mr. Matthews, either one's interested, let us know and we'll add you to that list.
A week from Thursday, right?
A week from Thursday. We're going to turn those names in on Thursday morning, so if you can let me know sometime tomorrow, we'll finalize that list. The tour, bus tour is at 8 o'clock, sorry, 10 o'clock.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, is it 10 o'clock? And then, the, that'll get back about 11:30 at the GPAC where the event's going to be held for the first time. The lunch will be between 11 and 12, it's floating lunch, and the conference will begin around noon and the conference will end at about 3:45 or 4:00.
Or the bus at the GPAC?
Yes, everything is at the GPAC. So, you can park there and register and then get on the bus and then we'll bring you back there.
Thanks.
All right, next announcement. Alright, next announcement, uh, is the clue. The first steering committee meeting is next week. Uh, September 7th, which is Wednesday, and it's scheduled to be from 6, I mean, uh, 5:00 to 6:50 in the training room. And, um, I'm gonna turn it over to John. He had a handful of things he wanted to cover, including this map you have in front of you.
Yes, so in front of you, there is a development map. Uh, Mr. Dellinger had asked us if staff could do a map similar to the, the approved projects map. Mr. Trezenberg had mentioned that, that, um, I remember our staff, GS, uh, staff, um, was Brian Goffey was working on this as a, a, a dynamic map, but for the sake of time, Mr. Dellinger had asked, we go ahead and get something. So this is a, a static map of the projects that are in review. A clip to that is the, are the names of the projects. And then these correlate to projects that are listed in the planning dashboard that is on the SharePoint site that council has. So with tomorrow's email with the follow-up from today, we'll just resend that link. But if you're looking for details about these, you can find those on the SharePoint site. The future goal for this and what Brian is working towards is that this will be a dynamic map and when you click on the, the parcel, you will actually get a pop-up window that's got the details that shows up in the, in the database so that you don't have to go back and forth. But for the sake of time, um, he was able to get this by tonight's meeting and we really appreciate him using his time and his talents while they're juggling, um, some other work in planning to be able to get this produced and out. So if you have questions about anything that's on the map here, Jeff or I, either one can answer those for you. I did want to update y'all on a name you haven't heard for quite some time, that is Google. Um, some of you may remember that long, long ago, when Google announced putting their fiber in the triangle, we had a lot of announcement about that. Um, we, that, that went away for quite some time. Google came back to us several months ago and said that they were ready to start putting some infrastructure in, in the Garner area. And so Mr. Johnson led the development, um, of a master encroachment agreement with Ms. Jones's input. This is, this is something that we have not done in Garner before, but it's a very big step to be able to work with the larger utility providers so that we have a master agreement that controls everything about what is done in and on town-controlled streets. And, uh, under that master agreement, Google will now come in with small batches of small areas of where they're going to be doing work. Staff will review those and sign off on those. So the master agreement's in place. Mr. Dickerson signed off on that. And they've now come in with their first three small areas that they're running fiber. So I'll mention where they are, but what I can't tell you is that, when does that mean houses or people in that area can get service? But they are along the Garner Road area. There's some area, um, in the School Lakers neighborhood that they're gonna be working first, along Avery Street. But again, I, I almost hesitate saying that because we don't know when that means service is actually available to folks. But I wanted you to know that Google would be back in the area, but also just wanted to, to recognize and commend the good work that Mr. Johnson did in putting in place a new process for us to be able to handle, uh, these type things. And I think we're gonna only see more of these as we continue growing. And so we're, we're glad that we've got that first one of these, uh, in place and behind us.
John, does this, uh, remind me, is this, is this our foray into, first foray into our town? Uh, or, or did they come in, was it way back when and do a little something and then they sort of left and we didn't?
They, they didn't do much work then I'm aware of. The town entered into a lease for a site, a town-owned site where they thought they were going to need to build a, a hut, as they call it, to put some of their infrastructure in. The way that they go about implementing their product now, the, the hut is not needed as far as we know. I don't know that we've got anything official on that, but we don't expect it to be needed. The way.
They're leasing the property, though.
Yeah, they're leasing the property, but, and so then after that lease, I'm not aware of anything really that they did in terms of any infrastructure.
Alright, thank you.
And then the last project I wanted to mention to you was, um, City of Raleigh Utilities is going to be needing to replace some sewer line along Garner Road. And I, I don't have the exact start and endpoints with me tonight, I apologize. But, uh, in a process that they call, um, pipe bursting, whereas, uh, you may have heard before of, of utility companies lining pipe where they, they run a smaller pipe inside of an existing one. This is the opposite. This is running a large pipe around the outside of an existing and then they go in and burst out the old pipe that was in there and remove it. And so there's a section, um, along Garner Road, uh, in, in the vicinity of the, the GPAC to the senior center type area and I think a little further east where they're gonna be starting that. Uh, so we just wanna make folks aware of it. It will unfortunately result in some street cuts and some pavement cuts. Uh, but as we've talked about before and Ms. Behringer's mentioned to us, in that general vicinity of some aging infrastructure. So while it does come with some, some challenges, at least they are, you know, working on trying to address some of those, um, challenges when they can. Mr. Dickerson, that's all I have.
That concludes anything we have.
Wanted to say publicly is I just wanted to recognize Maria and her team with the Parks and Rec Department with their grant. Receiving the grant for Jürgen was a huge undertaking as far as preparing the application and getting that submitted, uh, before the deadline and they took it on and they were very successful. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank them for their dedication and their efforts for submitting the grant. And we're looking forward to being able to use those dollars towards that important project.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Just briefly, I hadn't had a chance to get an email out to you, but last week I went to court on the Harris case. This was the gentleman who was suing the Garner Police Department for 15 million dollars. He did voluntarily dismiss that case. Uh, he dismissed it with prejudice, so we are not facing that potential liability anymore.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Alright, I've heard from everybody here, I guess. The thing back there. You okay, David? Okay. Alright, counsel, we'll go to, uh, council reports. I'll start on my left tonight, I guess. Maybe even starting here.
Uh, just two things. Uh, John, uh, the piping going on Old Stage and Van Dora, they've been running down that Old Stage. Is that, it looks like it's cutting through the woods. Is, what is that? Is that a blue pipe, something that's water? Where's that going?
Um, I, I can't speak to those specific pipes without going out to visit Mr. Matthews, but site work has started for the townhome project that was approved on the west side of Old Stage Road.
Okay.
Across from, uh, the church, Papa Springs. Um, I believe the infrastructure you see is related to that, but I may not have seen the exact same pipes you have, but we are getting, having utility work related to that done or seeing that done.
And the only other thing, just to compliment, uh, we had the, the Wall at Hills, uh, at the, uh, you know, the presentation. And I know the mayor was there and Kathy was there and, uh, it was quite impressive. I did ask him, are they gonna make that available for people who want it? And they're trying to figure out how they're gonna do that since DVDs are no longer the big thing. So, but they're working on making that available and just figuring out how they're gonna do it. So, very impressive and good turnout. I thought everything went very well. Thank you. That's all.
Question probably for Mr. Hodges. Um, we've been talking for most of this year about timber drive and I know we talked about speed issues. You met with DOT multiple times. We talked about reducing speed limit from 35 at, starting at Van Dora Springs intersection and some issues with the crosswalk, which I, I appreciate Mr. Johnson working on getting them to, to, I get the timer back right. What's, what's the status? And they're talking about some signage. I know that, that, as I understand it, the DOT board has to pass the speed limit change that, I think we approved about six months ago. Do, any update on any of that?
Mr. Johnson is reaching out regularly to DOT and the group that is responsible for coming out and installing those signs. And they had also committed to, to replacing smaller and older signage along the 35 zone and we're just not getting responses as to when they can actually get that scheduled. But he checked on that as recently as two weeks ago to see if there was an update and we're just having a hard time getting any good update from them. So we'll, we'll try to reach out again and see if there's anything we can get. We're, we're equally frustrated with that. We did get good response on the crosswalk, though, and, and so we were pleased that the, the, that issue was taken care of quickly.
Yes, I appreciate that. And then, and the resident who takes her two children, or one goes to school and the other one goes with her, just small, uh, doesn't, doesn't attend school yet. So I appreciate that. It's just, it's frustrating that it's taking this long to move this along. Uh, I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer?
I just wanna reiterate that I'd like to get some more information about the, um, number of square feet from a project that the proprietors are being notified about and, uh, and who they're notifying. Uh, I, I'm not opposed to notifying people at a good distance because I was a victim of not being notified one time, but I am a little bit concerned about the extent to, of, uh, numbers of people that need to be notified. So you said you would follow up on that, John?
Right.
Behringer?
Just two things. Uh, thank you all for this map. It's very helpful to visualize and it has 540 on it, too, which is exciting. And also just wanna commend Parks and Rec again on the, the grant. They've done a great job of applying and getting a lot of grants. We hear about most of them, I think, but maybe not all of them. Um, but they've been very diligent. So that's been good to see, to get that sort of philanthropic money into the town. So congratulations to them for, it takes a lot of work to apply for grants, but it pays off, so.
I'll tell on what already has been said. Congratulations, uh, to the Parks and Rec for the hard work and I, and I know that you congratulated them, but I'm also sure that you were involved in some form or fashion. So thank you for your hard work as well.
Okay, and the mayor will mention just a couple of things. And, and it dovetails with what you said about Parks and Rec. I, I was impressed with the, uh, little social gathering that included, uh, ice cream social over at the rec center. Was it one day last week? Uh, I certainly, I enjoyed, uh, I enjoyed it and I think the people, uh, who were there did as well. It was a nice, it was a little break in the afternoon, I think. So, uh, we'll see about that again. And I would say, I guess, to the general public out there, let's see, uh, school, school is officially back in now, right?
Yes.
So I would challenge our citizens, I, I, I still think, um, too many people are speeding on our, uh, on our streets and highways, particularly those that have 35 mile an hour speed limits. And, uh, some of those go right by schools. I would challenge our citizens to slow down a little bit. It's, uh, unsafe to, uh, travel at, uh, excess speeds and you might be endangering the life of some other people. So, um, I hope people will pay, uh, more attention to, uh, the speed limits on our roadways. With that, uh, that's all I have. Anything else from council before we adjourn? Okay, anything? Okay, alright. Uh, motion to adjourn is in order?
I move.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. There we are, adjourned from this, uh, work session. Thank you for your time.